...of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. I call this meeting to order. Can we have the roll call, please?
Ms. Bonkey?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dudenheffer?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Ms. Shelton?
Here.
Mr. Snellings? Mr. Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I'll be conducting the meeting tonight. Mr. Snellings is not going to be here due to an illness. We hope he will be back in a couple of weeks and he can have this job back. All right. We have a couple of proclamations that we want to make presentations to today. The first one is a proclamation recognizing the coordinator and sponsor of the National Night Out on August the 6th, and I ask Sheriff Decatur and Sergeant Burgess to please come forward. We get a little unorganized when our meetings overlap here, so... It's my honor here today to... And it's always my honor to work with these guys. The sheriff is a very integral part of Stafford County and the county is safe and is beautiful and wonderful place for families to be raised because of the work of these guys. So, we have a National Night Out, which I apologize, I was out of town and not able to attend. But I'm going to read this proclamation and give you a chance to address the public. And again, thank you so much for your service. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch sponsors a unique nationwide community awareness and crime prevention program on August the 6th, 2019 entitled National Night Out. And whereas this year marked the 36th year of National Night Out, an event that provides an opportunity for Stafford County to join forces with thousands of communities across the country in promoting relationships between the community and police to enhance the prevention of crime. And whereas the office of the Stafford County Sheriff sponsors a main event locally at Stafford Marketplace, which was attended by thousands, and smaller event in 13 neighborhoods this year. And whereas the Stafford Marketplace event was a time of celebration and fellowship with community organizations, county entities, citizens, and businesses, all participating to help encourage citizens' engagement in the community. And whereas Stafford County continues to strengthen public and private relationships with residents, businesses alike through community outreach programs such as National Night Out. And whereas we commend the work of all staff, volunteers, and local sponsors who work tirelessly to make this event such a success. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 20th day of August, 2019, recognize the efforts of the community and the office of the Stafford County Sheriff in hosting our National Night Out 2019. Again, thank you so much for your service to the community. Our next presentation is to Fire and Rescue for its Fill the Boot Campaigns supporting the Musculodystrophy Association. Please welcome Master Tech Scott Strain, who will accept this proclamation. Again, our first responders and our sheriffs in Fire and Rescue, I tell you, we have first rate. Thank you for that.
Thank you, sir.
Let me read this proclamation here. Whereas the members of Stafford Fire and Rescue exemplify the must or most time-honored American ideals of public service and sacrifice, protecting the citizens of our community from tragedy on the home front. And whereas the members of Stafford Fire and Rescue are highly trained and dedicated individuals who demonstrate daily an extraordinary caliber of character and courage in the face of danger. And whereas the members of Stafford Fire and Rescue selflessly donate their time and energy to fighting for children and adults with musculodystrophy, ALS, and related life-threatening diseases that severely limit muscular strength and mobility by filling the boots each year for the Musculodystrophy Association. And whereas over the past 65 years, professional firefighters from across the country have raised more than $650 million for the MDA through the annual Fill the Boot Campaign. Sixteen fifty million dollars. That's a lot of money. A little bit of money here. Whereas members of the Stafford Fire and Rescue will be asking citizens and visitors to fill the boot over the Labor Day weekend in an effort to support the MDA. And whereas firefighters across the country in service to MDA have given a great deal of hope to families fighting life-threatening neuromuscular diseases. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 20th day of August, 2019, recognizes the effort of Stafford Fire and Rescue to raise money to support the Musculodystrophy Association through the Fill the Boot Campaign.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, all.
And I implore and ask all the citizens of the county, when you see these firefighters out on the street, please contribute. It's for a great cause. Okay, our first order of business tonight is the approval of the meeting agenda. Are there any additions and deletions requested by board members?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I would like to defer the item on Edwards Drive to the next meeting.
Number?
That is... Twenty-eight. Yeah, motion.
Do you have a second?
Second to approve the agenda with deferral of item number twenty-eight.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Talia to vote, please. Minor change in our program here on how it depicts our voting on our screen, so...
I have a yes.
Okay? Gray means they're not here to vote, so if you...
Yeah, and actually, when I press the button, it just gives me a hash sign. It doesn't give me a...
You gotta press it twice the first time.
Regardless, the motion passes six to zero. Now we will go into the presentations by the public. Please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. If you are here to speak about this evening's public hearings, please hold these comments until the 7:00 PM session. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speakers speak slowly and clearly into the microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Please refer to the lights on the podium to monitor your time. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red notes that your time is up. Our first, I have three speaker cards. The first speaker is Mr. Philip Horning.
Good afternoon. Welcome back from your summer recess. I'm Philip Horning, reside at 1012 England Drive. As Vice President of the Friends of Wide Water State Park, Inc., and I lay us on to the school board, I would like to address item 16 on your consent calendar, the VATTI grant application. The park's master plan states Wide Water State Park will be a cornerstone partner in enhancing the education for future generations of students. Phase three of the park's master plan calls for the construction of an environmental education center. We are working with the Virginia Department of Conservation and Stafford County School Board in an effort to provide 1,100-acre K-12 hands-on, outdoor, living, science ecology classroom for its approximately 28,000 students and their families. High-speed broadband internet service throughout the park is critical to the success of this outdoor initiative. We support the county's 2019 VATTI grant application, which will make available broadband, high-speed internet service throughout the park. We request your support.
Thank you, sir.
It's a go on by itself? Okay. These photos that you're going to see here were taken by a member of our organization who lives in Wide Water. Just to give you an idea of what the ecology is there available for students.
Are we almost at the end?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker card I have is for John Nagoski. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Thank you. Start?
Yes, sir.
My name is John Nagoski. I live at 380 Acquia Creek Road in Stafford. And I come to ask for your support for the VATTI grant and for development of the internet within Stafford in general. My wife and I moved to Arlington for Acquia Creek in 2000 after raising our three kids in Arlington. And when the last of the ones went off to college, we moved here. And... But I continued my business as a sole proprietor in developing information systems for state, local, federal government. I had worked in... I'd retired from the federal government, so I had an ice cushion. And my wife worked as a teacher in Fairfax County and thought we could survive here. Didn't realize of the... At the time, just how sad the internet was, unfortunately. It was, we get a whopping 0.6% download speed. Whoa, you might say, pretty tough. But the... I think for... To be considered underserved, that's anything under 10 megabits. So, we're way down there. My business obviously suffered, is that actually my wife's teaching, you know, would have been greatly improved had there had internet such as we have today. My... Just now, we're retired and having a wonderful life on Acquia Creek. And... But my children, three kids, all married, and 10 grandkids come to visit frequently. Not as frequently as we would like, but frequently. And they tells me, the kids tell me, well, their internet is... Verizon is trying to get them to go to 1 gigabyte. Holy cow, I say. And they... But they say, no, they're pushing that. And then my grandchildren never come, but always say, hey, grandpa, internet's down again. And so, we do what we can to patch things together. I spoke before the board about 10 years ago in support of healthy growth. And I know that's a big concern of all of yours. And it is mine, too. And for me, healthy growth is the development of vibrant communities where there are good support for jobs, for education, for social life, and without unnecessary expense in infrastructure. And certainly, the internet helps with all of those things. And it's only going to improve with 5G. And that 5G is going to bring us fantastic new applications in financial, stock management, for education, for farm benefit, smart farms, smart homes. The list goes on. Property values improve, assessments go up. And so, the government clearly has a role, I think, to support the internet and other public infrastructures when there is in fact... When there is in fact a lack of support by other public utilities, private utilities.
Thank you, sir. Please wrap up. Okay.
Then... And certainly, there have been occasions of this in the past. The Rural Electrification Act of '36 did just that, provided a light in the home of every rural area. So, I just want to thank you for your support for the internet in the past and particularly for KGI, for coming together and joining with the county and the county staff, and then all of you board members. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And particularly Cindy Shelton, our supervisor, who has been a light for us.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Last speaker card I have here is from Mr. Paul Woldowski.
Paul Woldowski, Eight Picket Lane. Now you see why you should be giving four minutes to every speaker, which you took away, which is one of our rights. But the picture is worth a thousand words, and it was really neat to see the nature out there because my campaign is green. And I'm here to talk about political campaign signs. And I wish Mr. Gavin was here because you're littering this county. If you read, like the letter I got, maximum time duration of 60 days at any given location up to twice a year. Well, there's 77 more days till Election Day. Some of you get a free ride to your next one until we gerrymander and re-district this county like it should be. Obviously, there's so much interest in running for supervisor. I'm anxious to see the Rock Hill District result because I'll be one of those guys hoping to get 16 people to vote with me for me. And then the other two, maybe one of them will win by 13 votes, and then they won't get 50% of the vote. But I was that night out, and I'm really glad that I didn't see any... I must have came at the right time because that's what life's about, being in the right place at the right time. As you can see, I tell a lot of people about the new school week. It's only record highs this week. We don't have air-conditioned buses. We're giving out water, so you can see that's a great decision. And I always tell people, I'm a big fan of term limits. If you've been in office for 20 years, then maybe you should be like I did. I did 20 years in the Air Force. I retired. But that's up to you. The other speaker said that if we bring the internet, well, in 2015, that was my campaign. Education, education, education. And there's no such thing as the internet... You don't want them to upgrade the assessments. You want them to upgrade the appraisals. Assessments are taxes, okay? Appraisals are real estate. So, I'm going to educate you all all about that area. And I'm going to do everything with a Think Green movement. You will not see one sign in this county because I don't litter. I can't help it that we have people who've never run for public office before who are literally littering this county. Even Mr. Milde did it correctly. He used the 60 days correctly because it's geared for when they have to run in a primary. Now, he took down all his signs, and now he's going to run in a general election. And I don't think you'll see anything till within 60 days after Labor Day.
Thank you, sir. It's all the speaker cards I have, so we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone on the right who would like to address the board? Okay, I'll see any... Anyone on the left want to come forward and address the board? Okay, there being none, we'll close that section of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is reports by board members.
Mrs. Mauer?
All right. Well, welcome back to all of my colleagues here on the board. I've kind of missed you all. Although Meg and I evidently didn't get the memo and are wearing the same jacket. But anyway, a couple of things while we were out on break. I did attend the Eagle Scout ceremony for Noah Hernandez. You know, there's one thing that I do that's my most favorite on this board, and it's attending those Eagle Scout ceremonies. Absolutely what is right about Stafford County. The way that the community helps to raise these young men into their Eagle Scout is unbelievable. Stafford County has one of the largest populations of Eagle Scouts, and quite proud of that and very proud of Mr. Noah Hernandez. Also, attended the community event in Mountain View High School. This was the third annual community event there, and then National Night Out, along with a number of my colleagues. And we had a FAMPO meeting last night. And when we start these regional organizations, there is a great sense of duty, and everybody is coming together in order to accomplish, you know, something that is a focus of these regional commissions. And in the case of FAMPO, it's transportation. But as we move along, these organizations kind of personalities get in the way. And so, I want to thank my colleagues on the board. We did upgrade our memorandum of understanding. It was a heroic feat, quite frankly, by Mr. Dudenheffer, Ms. Shelton, and Ms. Bonkey, and Mr. Cohen here. Ms. Bonkey and Mr. Cohen serve on GWRC. Because GWRC and FAMPO had to come together in order to come to this agreement, and it wasn't that easy. And as somebody with experience in government contracting, there are some issues that we have had with FAMPO, and that's with meeting some of our federal regulations. And so, I want to thank everybody on this board for sticking with it. And I'm looking forward to FAMPO truly focusing on transportation issues. For our FAB meeting, I am pleased to report that all projects are in for the Technical Review Committee to include the school projects. So, I want to thank the school board, and I want to thank school staff for getting their projects in on time. This has been somewhat of a difficulty over the last years of we... As we have been improving our relationships and working together. And so, when the schools do something right, I want to shout that out, too. So, thank you very much for getting your projects in on time. Really looking forward to a productive CIP process. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd also like to remove item number 24. That concludes my remarks.
Ms. Shelton?
Boy, that was a long summer. It just seemed like we had a lot to do. And so, I went to several different ribbon-cutting ceremonies. I'm pretty happy to... And I saw some of you guys there, too, on Rocky Nissan, the FIT 20, and then, of course, Annie Moncur finally opening. Yay. As you know, or you don't know, if you can remember, we have a STAR study for Acquia. What that means is that this is a study from VDOT of the congestion on Route 1 in the Acquia District. Our pre-brief, if you will, is going to be next week. For anyone that wants to attend, it's going to be at VDOT. If you want to contact me or just show up there at 1 o'clock next Tuesday. I'm pretty excited to see what they've decided that we might be able to do to improve congestion on Route 1. We've done a lot of work on VATTI grants. You've heard a couple of people talk about it. Thank you very much. It's been a huge lift to understand what our opportunities can be. Thank you very much to Wide Water State Park and Mr. Cavalier on coming on board and helping us do that because that will be a huge improvement for you guys. I really look forward to seeing that. We've also attended some transportation events in addition to FAMPO. We've had multiple FAMPO meetings this summer, getting ready for this MOU that we signed last night. It was a big event for us to finally get that closure. One part of the events that I attended was on the I-95 improvement. They have an update that's going to be on Thursday at... This Thursday, on the 22nd, at Monroe High School in Fredericksburg, if you want to get an update for that. I also had the opportunity to go out and look at the renovation that's been completed so far on the Union Church down in Fredericksburg. It's awesome. And so, I mean, it's just really incredible that we have a benefactor, someone here in our county that looked at that and has privately donated the funds to be able to preserve that. It's just an amazing, amazing facility. So, I was just blessed to be able to attend that. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item number 21. Thank you.
Ms. Bonkey?
Yes. Thank you. I have a couple of announcements. The first one is we will be welcoming our new R-Board landfill director tomorrow morning, actually, at 8:30 at our meeting. And I really look forward to the experience that he's going to bring to us because we really need to figure out different ways to bury our trash over the next 40 years because the way we're doing it is not sustainable, and it costs too much. So, anyway, this is the first time in Stafford County, after many, many, many years, that we actually have an R-Board director. It has been something that we... The county has paid for through our deputy county administrator, Keith Dayton, who retired earlier this year. And so, this is going to be new for us, and I'm really looking forward to this gentleman bringing us a lot of experience and knowledge. His resume is really phenomenal. Also, I'm on the Bay Consortium Workforce Development Board meeting and... Board, and we have... I'm also on the Youth Accountability and Performance Committee. And we look at numbers every month and how Stafford County is affected. Some of the numbers regarding our youth and development, our numbers could be a little bit stronger. And I'm going to be working with the Skill Source Group down in Fredericksburg and trying to make sure that they're getting more into our schools so we can make sure these young people get out, especially those that do not want to go on to a two- or a four-year college and make sure they have workforce development opportunities in front of them. I also attended the 50th anniversary of our library. It was out at the Howe Library. They had a lot of activities for people. It was really phenomenal. They had dogs in there from one of the local SPCA's called the Dominion Group. And also, there was a really neat group there. They were dancing, and it was all about faith ministry. And I loved these women. They happened to be African-American. They had white pants on and T-shirts, and all their dance moves were really upbeat. And there was nothing that was sexual-oriented. And I commended them afterward that, you know, what they're doing was really phenomenal. They weren't showing a lot of skin. It was just a way to participate and be involved in faithful ministry. It was just a way to participate and be involved in faithful ministries in a really nice, productive, clean way. So I wish them well with what they're going to be doing. As the board already mentioned, other board members said that we did approve the MOU last night at GWRC. That was a major feat, and it was approved unanimously. So I think we're all ready to move on and have that behind us. I did attend the VACO Summer Summit Meeting last week, and then VACO, Virginia Association of Counties, we had our board meeting as well. I have a tremendous amount of legislation here from every committee. I know some of you on the board participate in some of these steering committees. There are a lot of the things that we have been working on over the last couple of years are still going to be legislative items. I'll pass this on to Cindy and Mark. But I did want to bring up one thing that I had not heard of before, and it's called peer-to-peer vehicle rentals. And this is going to be coming up under the transportation bill. So this is like Airbnb's, but it's for your car. So if you'd like to rent your car out to somebody that doesn't have a car, and they drive it from point A to point B, that is going to be something that you'll be seeing out there. So one of the reasons it's going to be considered as far as legislation, and I see our Commissioner of Revenue sitting out here, is how do these rentals work? What's the taxation on these rentals? And so it's not just a simple matter. The state has to look at the taxing of these kinds of transactions. So there'll be a lot of discussion about that, but I wanted to bring that one up with you because it is a little different. And I will, do want to let you know something that's been near and dear to us is the Comprehensive Services Act that is still continuing to get a lot of traction really throughout the Commonwealth. Everybody realizes that there is a way that we can educate these young kids that have disabilities within our own counties at a significant lower cost. So we hope that that actually passes this year. But again, I'll give this to the Legislative Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would like to pull consent item number 15, please.
Mr. Cavalier.
Thank you, Julia. I was honored yesterday to be a part of the group from the Acquia Harbor Host Lions Club that delivered five of these Polar Life Pods to each of the county's high schools. And what they are are devices that you put people in, student athletes in this case, or anybody that suffers from heat exhaustion or heat stroke, and especially it's apropos now during the extreme weather that we're having heat-wise, that they can put these people in there and keep them cool until the emergency vehicles can respond, and then they can transport them in these devices all the way to the hospital to help the cooling process with their bodies. But the Lions Club, which I'm part of, raises money from the community and gives it all back to the community. There's no administrative cost, no paid people. It all 100% goes back into our community. So I just wanted to make sure that we commended the Lions for that. Also, adding on to the Vatty Grant broadband situation, I did meet with the Whitewater Beach Citizens Association a couple weeks ago and discussed this option with them that would bring broadband to the Whitewater Peninsula and then run fiber to people's houses out at the point. And it was very well received. Everybody signed up for it, basically, and they're very excited to be getting high-speed Internet finally in a rural location that is completely unserved, not even underserved, but they had no ability at all to get anything beyond, you know, the satellite Hughes Net or something. So I then met with, oh, I also wanted to thank the EDA for approving the money to go along with the grant. I also met with Potomac Village. They have some traffic and parking issues there, and Alex was out there with me, and we're looking into ways to do some traffic calming and some parking restrictions along their main thoroughfare there. And the same thing holds true for the Stonebridge HOA. They're asking for traffic calming measures along Clark Lane, which is their main thoroughfare in Stonebridge. And lastly, I did attend six back-to-school nights, Brookpoint High School, Shirleyheim Middle School, Moncur Elementary, Kate Waller Barrett Elementary, Hampton Oaks Elementary, and Whitewater Elementary, where, I got to say, Hampton Oaks, and then Whitewater, which I visited subsequently to that date. Going into the cafeteria kitchens is absolutely just a sauna in there. It's, the temperatures are over 80 degrees in there, and I was really there at an off time, so it wasn't even as hot as when the ovens are going full blast in there. And the humidity level is just excessive, and so I'm hoping that the school board decides in their priorities to go ahead and air-condition all these underserved school cafeteria kitchens. And I think we have nine of them in the county right now. I know they were doing one, I believe, at Rock Hill here this summer, but they all need done. I mean, working under those conditions is extremely hard, and I hope the school board sees fit to go ahead and do that, especially since we're starting school so early. And I know other people have issues with the air conditioning and the buses, too, and I just talked to the superintendent today, and he said that 19 of the new school buses that have on order right now do have air conditioning. So when they replace the current fleet with new ones, they will all have air conditioning. But right now, they're not all going to have air conditioning from the get-go here. So that will be a little uncomfortable during the summer heat, too. So that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen.
Thank you, Julia. It was a very short, short summer. And of course, the back-to-school night was also the same night as the 50th anniversary for our library system, as well as the National Night Out. So it was a little difficult for people to get to be everywhere. Mr. Cavalier raised the issue about the cafeterias and the kitchens, and let me just give a shout-out and appreciation to my compatriot over on the school board, Dwayne McCosker, who listened to us, and he and I went back and forth and communicated on that, and he brought it forth to the school board, and they're actually looking forward to doing something about that. So I really appreciate that Mr. McCosker has moved forward on something that Mr. Cavalier and I were crapping about for a while now. Certainly, we are starting earlier, and it's 90-some degrees out, and it's going to get to a point where it might be even easier to make the food outside than on the inside. I'd like to give a thank you to the members of our Parks and Recs and Community Facilities people, and particularly Mike Morris and Reggie. Irma Clifton was, had donated things for the Shelton Cottage, and they wonderfully have been helpful in getting those items over into that facility. And their kindness and consideration is deeply appreciated, so thank you, sir. I attended the summer school graduation, which is phenomenal. That one, we get to actually shake the hands of the students as they go across the stage, and it's really good to see them moving on with their lives in a productive way. Many of them entering the armed services and continuing their service to the country is awesome. I attended the ribbon-cutting at Moncur Elementary School. And last school issue is the YES Program, the Youth Engage in Stafford program that has been very successful, that I think we are one of the few in the state that do anything about this, where young adults can serve on county boards and have input. We are accepting applications now for juniors and seniors. It is a terrific program. The young adults are treated very well by our boards and commission members, and I thank staff for their work on that, as well as all the members of the commissions. Attended the Economic Development Community Forum that was held, one of them, the two that was held already. It's very important to get your input as to what we're looking forward to do in Stafford. Often, we hear complaints where we don't, people don't ask for input. We are asking for your input. There's, the next one is at Oak Grove Baptist Church on September 4th at 7:00 p.m., and then after that, 9:12, it's at the White Oak Rescue Station at 7:00 p.m. So I urge you to go and visit that. I was chair of the Public Safety Committee. We had our update, our monthly update from the sheriff, had another good report about crime. It's amazing how many individuals are coming from out of the area to Stafford to try to do things and are caught, and that should be noted. Also, the fire department, our fire and rescue are doing a very great job with, in many ways. One of the things that they've been ongoing as a study of the facilities so that we can make sure that they are in the 21st century, and everything's up to snuff, and we appreciate that. And a terrific thing that our fire and rescue has done, thanks to this board, thanks to Mr. Foley's effort, thanks to the school board and Dr. Kizner, is we have our fire training class up and running. These excellent young adults, and I had a pleasure going and watching them and their teacher yesterday, very enthusiastic, very motivated young men and women. They started doing hazmat training in the middle of July, wearing all that gear. So while some of us were actually sitting in air conditioning, these juniors and seniors in high school were learning to do, as Ms. Baumke was saying, we need to get more career technical education. Here is a fine example of this county coming together to do that, and the young adults coming forward to do that, students from across all the five high schools. So excellent appreciation to the fire and rescue people for moving forward with that in a terrific way, and that ends my remarks. I'm not pulling anything.
Mr. Dudenheffer.
Thank you. The great part about being chairman is you get to speak, you get the last word on everything here, so I remember that distinctly in being a good thing. So you heard him talk about the MOU between FAMPO and GWRC. Another important issue that is we're dealing with at the northern Virginia level is that most citizens here don't know, but Northern Stafford belongs to the Washington DC Metropolitan Planning Organization. And only because there is a memorandum of understanding between that organization and the Fredericksburg Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, North Stafford is handled and planning for transportation is done by FAMPO. But there's also funding that comes from Washington to FAMPO for, it's been being used across the entire region, but it's technically there because of the residents and the people of North Stafford and their commute. So that MOU is going to be under review over the next year. I think at this point, it was 2004 when it was looked at last time, there are some questions about whether we're getting the money that we're supposed to, whether that money is being spent for the residents of North Stafford who actually are bringing that money in or could be used actually across all of Stafford. So I'm going to ask the board for some consensus. One of the concerns is actually comparing apples and apples. Is it better for us to be managed and training and planning by the Fredericksburg group? Or would we be better served by being, and take North Stafford to the Washington DC MPO? So I've asked Mr. Foley and if any board members have any concern, but that we analyze what it would take to actually just to get us all the pros and cons of whether that, what would be the best course of action for Stafford County before we enter in any agreement on a new memorandum of understanding, and also to make sure that Stafford's getting the fair share. A number that was thrown out, and we need to confirm it, but about a third of the funds that go to FAMPO now are there because of the Northern Stafford being part of the Washington DC MPO. So there's a lot to analyze there. Also, I asked Mr. Foley to determine whether we, on our county staff, actually have the resources and knowledge to do that study. So, you know, I'm asking if there's any dissent from the board that as part of his analysis, he looks at, we possibly bring someone else in who's an expert in this field that can actually make recommendations on what would be the best course of action for Stafford. So is there, as he goes and analyzes it, before we do that, it would have to come to the board, but he has to do some work now to kind of get us there. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right. Thank you very much. I want to announce that the Mine Road section of, between Austin Ridge Road and Courthouse Road, or actually between Emory Mill Road, will open next week. It's been long overdue. It's, I believe the actual date is the 28th, but it should be open next week. They had their final walkthrough at VDOT. Unfortunately, the traffic light at Mine Road and Courthouse Road won't be completed until sometime later in the fall. So the full effect and the benefit of where it is won't be felt, I don't think, until the traffic light gets put in, but it certainly will help some people in Austin Ridge who've had some severe issues with cut-through traffic through their quiet neighborhoods. Just for information purposes, on July 1st, a new proffer law was implemented or went into effect for the state of Virginia. It loosens up some of the restrictions and allows us, again, to be able to work with developers who want to come to the county and are looking for rezonings. We were handicapped severely by the way the law was written before, and now a developer can opt-in to the new law, which allows us to actually sit down and negotiate legitimate proffers for new building. Last thing I'd like to talk about is we had a severe pedestrian accident on Garrisonville Road between Parkway Boulevard and North Stafford High School over the weekend. I just want to report that the gentleman that was involved, hit by a car, is in the hospital, and the initial report was how severe the accident is, but I hear he's actually recovering in the hospital. But it has generated a bunch of concern by citizens on why isn't there a sidewalk there, and it's legitimate. It's something we and this board have been looking at for a very long time. The developer who owns that property along there is on the hook to put in the sidewalks and the pedestrian accommodations that are going, going to go in there. I'm checking now, but I thought actually a year ago, when we approved a CUP there, that they were actually going to start construction, but they haven't. So we have a major problem with getting the developers to actually execute what they come to us and ask us to do, so. But I just want to let you know that we haven't ignored that, that that is, has been an issue that we talk about here all the time. We've spent a lot of time, met at the school with the school board member, with the principal, on all kinds of different ways to improve the safety for the North Stafford kids. If you look, we had the Circuit Court approve putting a bond referendum on the ballot in November for $50 million. That $50 million can be turned into about $150 million. But one of the, one of the projects on that bond referendum is expanding Route 610 to six lanes from where it ends now at Eustace Road all the way to Shelton Shop, which would, we would redo and re-engineer the entire intersection right there in the front of North Stafford and make that all a safer, safer community. There's really no, no greater calling for us to do than to keep our kids safe, and especially at the schools, in any way that's possible, and this is one that we need to make sure we step out on. So thank you very much. The, next is a report from our county attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no report at this time.
Okay, thank you. Report from our county administrator.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just a couple of items. First of all, I wanted to take a minute to introduce to you Chris Edwards, our new Deputy Director of Public Works. He is, Chris is a licensed professional engineer with over 20 years of professional experience. Prior to coming to Stafford, he was the Deputy Director of Engineering for the Spotsylvania County Utilities Department, where he oversaw the engineering, water treatment, and laboratory divisions. He's also worked for VDOT in the private sector. Chris holds a BS from James Madison University and an MS in Civil Engineering from George Mason University. He's just started with us, and just wanted you all to know that we've hired a really great candidate to be one of our number-two guys in our Public Works Department focused on our whole utility operation. So I just wanted to be able to share that with you. And he might raise his hand, and I'd be sitting back there with Jason. And he might raise his hand, and I'd be sitting back there with Jason. So just wanted to let you know we've got a nice improvement to our staff with the new vacancy that we had. Secondly, I had sent out to you all a six-month agenda planning calendar to try to get some dates nailed down for joint meetings and work sessions. As you all know, we had a very busy spring with healthy growth and transportation, bond referendums, and a number of other things. That work continues now as we go into the fall. So we thought we would do some advanced planning based on your set of priorities, in particular healthy growth and transportation and some other items that you'd identified. But in addition to that, we have the five-year financial plan work sessions and significantly the CIP. You all had already given us some direction to have a joint meeting with the school board on October 15th, as an example, to get an early start on some of the confusion around some pretty major projects that we have scheduled. So, given the demands on your time, we spoke with the Chair and Vice Chair about putting a schedule forward. They suggested that we try to work as much as possible within the meeting dates that are already scheduled, rather than having separate dates. With the exception of one healthy growth work session, we think that we can do that, but it requires particularly some work sessions during the dinner hour. And it doesn't mean they have to be dinner meetings, but we would probably have to have a short half-hour dinner break and then have work sessions if they're not dinner meetings. And I know there were some different thoughts among board members about that. But you've received this, it's a part of the agenda materials, and I was looking for some general feedback from you. I got a little bit of information, but wanted to be sure that you were comfortable with what was here. You didn't have any major conflicts, so that we can begin to start to actually schedule specifically, for instance, when the school board's going to come and meet with you. There was a proposal that we have a joint dinner work session with the Economic Development Authority because of some strategic priorities you'd identified for economic development. But this is all at your pleasure. I put this out there, asked for some feedback, got a little bit, and would just like some concurrence or some feedback or input if you feel like we should make changes. This drives both the scheduling of joint meetings with other officials, but also drives our whole work plan on getting your priorities completed over the next six months. Just a couple of things that came up that were changes. The last healthy growth work session was proposed at a time that will not work, which was December 5th. We'd thrown out a few dates in December as alternatives, but we got, I think several of you said, "Let's push that off until after the first of the year, there's so much going on." So if that's a consensus of the board, we'll just come back to you with some dates in January at a later time. There was some sense of urgency from some board members about getting this done. We don't think by moving that to January, it will delay getting it, the whole process finished before the summer break of next year, believe it or not. That's because you want to follow the normal process where you have hearings and the Planning Commission has separate hearings. By law, you have to give the Planning Commission 100 days. They can finish sooner, but they have to at least have that much time. So if we push any further than the first part of January, it will probably push you past the summer recess into the fall. So with that said, given that some board members had a real sense of urgency, others, you know, voted differently on that, we wanted to at least throw that out for your consideration. The other major item, well, not major, but November 6th, Mr. Cohen, because of his school schedule, had just requested that we move the five-year plan work session to 1:00 instead of 11:00 so that it could get here sooner. That would just move the committees up front and then the work session back. That seems like a pretty easy thing to do. Last item was the legislative dinner. There's an opening on November 21st. The facility is available. Some board members said they thought a dinner meeting and doing it at that time would be best, rather than pushing that into December. So I throw those out for your consideration. If you're fine with that, we can move forward. If you've got some particular feedback on changes, then I just need to know that so that we can work forward.
Does anyone have any comments on that, one input?
I provided mine earlier.
Were yours addressed?
Yeah, it was the conflict with PRTC, but I think you addressed that.
On December 5th.
Ms. Bomke?
The 21st for the legislative dinner, is that a Monday? Is that the week of Thanksgiving?
It's a Thursday, the week before Thanksgiving. Because Thanksgiving is a week later this year.
All right, that's fine. Thank you.
On my calendar, it came up Thursday, November 21st as a CIP work session. Okay, so this would be after that, I guess.
The sheet that we sent out was November 19th, was that work session?
I have a FYFP work session, transportation plan, and consideration of results of referendum and refunding services on the 19th. Debt capacity CIP and five-year comparison of September 30th enrollment projections on the 19th, but then a separate CIP work session on the 21st.
Yeah, you're correct. In my original email, I had suggested that we would not be ready for the healthy growth work session part of that on that date. So that's when we pushed to December 5th. But again, there's a conflict on the 5th. So we're just replacing that with the one we'd like to get you committed to either in December or after January. And we have incorporated all the CIP work sessions into the 19th. And so on the 19th and the thing that's in your board packet, it shows both a work session at 1:00 on the CIP and a work session later during dinner for the five-year plan, which will touch on CIP and other issues. So the 21st of November is not on the calendar anymore for a CIP or any other work session, but we're suggesting we might use that for the legislative dinner, since you already had it kind of on your calendar.
Can we have staff clean up the calendar? Because it's still on the board calendar.
Yeah, and so we wanted to have this discussion so that we could then clean it up after we got your direction. But I understand the confusion. The document in front of you is the one that is trying to juggle all these things. And again, this is why we're doing this, unfortunately, there's a lot going on. So is there consensus on the 21st for legislative dinner?
Yes.
And is there consensus to move the last healthy growth work session after January or in January, or would you prefer to try to fit it into December?
January.
I'd like to fit it in myself.
I'd like to fit it in.
Okay, so the dates that we threw out were December 4th, 10th, and 12th. That came in an email. I think Ms. Bomke said she was available on any of those dates, and I believe Ms. Shelton said the same.
I'm available on any of those dates.
Are you talking about the evening?
Yeah, and the important point about this particular work session is it's designed to be the last one. Okay, you will have a work session during the dinner hour, and the public can comment, comment on that work session about healthy growth or any other matter, of course, but it gives them the opportunity. This final work session was, you all had suggested that we ought to have a work session out in the community at a separate time so that the public could come out and even engage, you know, in an hour afterwards with more public comment. That would be the point at which you talked about minimum lot sizes in the rural areas, as well as the transfer development rights program and how it might look. This last session would bring all that together and give a final opportunity for the public. And so any of those times, we would suggest that it be 5:30 to 8:00, and that at 7:00 you start some public comments, but you'd have time for a work session as well. I don't think we have to do this tonight, but we would, I think that what we heard from you was, "Let's do it out at a school or somewhere out in the county so that it's easier for the public to come out."
I'm good for attempted thoughts. I'm good with any of those dates.
Okay. Anybody have any problem with that? We can follow up on the exact date if everybody's open. Okay. The, I guess, we're fine with dinner meetings with the school board and the EDA, or I heard some feedback, some questions about that.
I'm very interested in having that dinner meeting with the EDA. I found the last meeting we had was incredibly useful, so I would like to see that remain on our agenda.
So, Mr. Chairman, if there aren't any other comments, we'll take what you had before you with the input we've just received, and we'll follow up with you on that and get the one location set for the other. I know this is, seems like a lot to do at this meeting, but there's a lot ahead, and this is going to lay out your calendar for six months, so I think it's very beneficial in that regard.
Well, and I also think we need to not carry over next year because it'll run right into budget and, you know, and the CIP, everything else. We need to clear it or do our best to clear it. Ms. Bomke?
Yeah, and I also feel in fairness to board members that are going to be leaving us in December, which just went Ms. Mauer, obviously others are on the ballot. We should complete that work because she's been a part of that whole discussion for the last couple of years, and I feel that it's only fair and maybe unfair to leave that to a new board member who doesn't have all that institutional knowledge and experience.
We will poll you all and ask you to actually give us a date that you prefer, or if you don't have any preference, we'll put a date out there and try to get that nailed down so that we can then update your calendar. So we'll do that through email, and of course, that information will be out to the public afterwards. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. The final item was the monthly construction report, and today we have our Transportation Program Manager, Alex Oziac, to come and give that report.
All right. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, Alex Oziac, Transportation Program Manager. Just going to give you a brief update on some, excuse me, construction projects going on here in our county. Click here, doesn't seem to be working. That would help. All right. First up, Fire Station Number 14. Most of the building has been completed. Right now, contractor's working on interior finishes. They're also digging the underground or stormwater detention system that's going on in front of the building. The training tower pictured here, the steel erection has been completed. They're working on some internal plumbing. And right now, we're anticipating obtaining the temporary certificate of occupancy probably either late September, early October. Next is our Poplar Road and Mountain View Road intersection improvement. This is right here at the intersection of Poplar Road and Cedar Hill Lane. Actually, this picture's a little out of date. Our contractor's actually gone ahead and placed the base pavement down on this roadway, and traffic is running on the new section of road. Right now, we're working on some, finishing up some grading and obscuring the old roadway. And we've got a November completion date, but I think we're probably going to beat this one by about a month. Next is the Brook Road Safety Improvement Project. As you know, our road closure's been extended through September of 2019. Our contractor's currently working at the tie-in right there at Stagecoach and Rustic Ridge, which is pictured. We had some unanticipated utility impacts there that we've gotten relocated, so we're moving along there. And then our sheet pile installation has started. Ma'am?
Ms. Mauer.
And not to throw salt in the wounds, I'm just curious, because I know that we had some devastating weather this last year. So, but what did those weather delays, like what was the original completion date?
So, hasn't thrown off our completion date for the project at all.
Okay.
We're still looking at a March 2020 completion date. Actually, our contractor thinks he's going to be able to finish up by the end of this year.
Okay.
So actually be able to finish up early, it just extended, the wet weather extended our road closures longer than anticipated.
Okay, road closure.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to the Route 1 and Courthouse.
Ms. Shelton?
I'm sorry, I had a question about that. I was going to ask you about the, what, when you say road closure, that indicates to me in October, Brook Road is going to be open. Can you describe what that's going to look like since the project's not completed?
Sure. The project will not be completed, but the road will be open through traffic. There still may be some intermittent lane closures during construction, but you'll be able to move throughout the project, and you won't have to take a detour any longer. Okay. All right. For our Route 1 and Courthouse Road Improvement Project, that's going on right here in front of our government center. Our right-of-way process is still ongoing. I've listed here 14 offers. We actually just got an additional offer this week, so that brings us up to 15 offers. And the board has previously approved action for condemnation on 10 of those parcels. So we've got about four left we still got to acquire. We're still working with the property owners to make those agreements and get the property. And we're also moving forward, we're going to have to demolish three buildings here along Route 1 before we can start utility relocation later on this fall. Next is our Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase 4 Project. This one's moving along quite well. We've got a retaining wall near Chatham Bridge, which is almost complete. We've got about 80% of the trail has been paved and been completed, and we're still anticipating completion of this project here in September. Next, the Belmont Ferry Farm Trail Phase 6. We're still working with VDOT, trying to coordinate who owns the right-of-way and if that right-of-way can be conveyed to the county so we can use to build our trail. And so we're still working through some of those issues with VDOT. We just got some additional information from their right-of-way section today that we're looking over, so we hope to have a decision here made shortly and start moving forward on this project. Next is our Juggins Road Improvement Project. This project was completed back in June 14th, 2019, allowing the opening of the Moncrief Elementary School. And our contractor was able to earn about a $47,000 incentive for completing the road about 14 days early. Next is our Brea Church Road Safety Improvement Project. For this one, this is improving Brea Church between 17 and Trustlow Road. We've got about 28 parcels will be impacting for right-of-way. We're still working with our private utility companies like Dominion and Verizon to obtain their easement requirements, so we can put those on the plans. We anticipate to have that all wrapped up here in September, early October, submit that to VDOT, and begin the right-of-way acquisition process then. Next is our Route 1 and Telegraph Road and Woodstock Lane Intersection Improvement Project. As you recall, we revised the concept of this plan to go back to the original smart-scale concept to help save some money. We've communicated that with our consultant, and they're moving along. We should be submitting public hearing plans to VDOT at the end of this September and actually hold a public hearing later on this fall. The Enon Road and Route 1 Improvement Project. As you know, we actually received some additional last-minute smart-scale funding, as well as some CMAC RSTP funding from FAMPO. I was able to fully fund this project. The unfortunate news, we won't receive that funding from the state or FAMPO until fiscal year 2023, which means we won't really be able to start design on the project until we have the funding, which will be about fall of 2022. So this will probably be the last slide you see on this one for a little while. Next are some of our utility projects.
Ms. Bomke?
So on that project, because we got CMAC and RSTP funds, that money will just sit there until we use it, is that correct? It won't be, and it'll be dedicated for that project?
That's correct, ma'am. It's dedicated there through FAMPO and VDOT. It just won't receive the funding until fiscal year '23.
Okay. I just don't want it to evaporate. Thank you.
It shouldn't, no. Thanks.
Ms. Shelton?
Go back to Enon Road. Yet last night at our FAMPO meeting, we received an update from Transurban on the replacement of those two bridges. Are you guys looking at this project in comparison to when those two bridges are going to be done? Because it looked like it was going to route some of that traffic into Enon Road in this area.
Right. So based on the timing of the construction and replacement of those two bridges, we wouldn't actually start design work on this project till about those construction projects are wrapping up. So there shouldn't be any conflict.
Okay. All right, thanks.
All right. Moving on to some of our utility projects. This is our Clayborne Run Sewer Interceptor Project. Right now, we've got all of our large distribution pipes installed, and we're working on the final tributary and distribution pipes, and then working on site restoration, and we are about 90% complete and on schedule to complete this next month.
Ms. Bomke?
So I know we're approving something on the consent agenda today for the CSX workers, and I just got to tell you, those numbers are staggering for what we're having to pay CSX to protect their right-of-way. I think if the public knew, those dollars, it's just, that's insane.
I agree. It's an exorbitant amount.
How do we get that changed in Washington? Or, I mean, I don't think we can sit back and just go, "Oh, it's just money." I mean, we have to do something that's within our power to make sure that those funds, whatever they charge us, that that is cut in half so other public entities don't have to do the same.
I agree. We, you know, we looked at that and tried to negotiate with CSX, and they ended up turning up an old agreement we had signed from WayWAP Wind, which kind of established these rates. So unfortunately, we were kind of stuck with it, and I agree, I think it's going to take legislative effort to kind of make any significant change with CSX and...
committee, but up to our, like, just name them, any of them, that we, yeah, Whitman would be one of them, but is this something that we could bring up to them? Are they on any transportation committees that you know of, or would we leverage the CTV to go to the federal government?
Leverage in the CTV, that's an interesting concept.
Okay. All right. I'm not going to let it go, though, because, Ms. Bumpke, you're absolutely right. There is something that we can do. I have no clue what it's going to be, but I really appreciate you showing us those numbers because they were absolutely shocking.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's our constituents' money. It's our money.
Absolutely, it is, and we have a responsibility to go back and see if that old agreement, look at all the old agreements we're dealing with on our boards, our regional boards, and, and this is where we can affect change. We might not be successful, but we need to at least look at it. So, thank you, Alex.
All right. I'll move on to our next. This is the Claiborne Run Parallel Force Main Project. Right now, the piping's about 90% complete. They're working on the bore under Little Falls Run, which is going to be a part of the, difficult part of the project. Right here, we're looking at late September, maybe early October completion date for this one. Next is our Lower Akakikke Project, which consists of both a pump station, gravity sewer, and a force main. The piping project has been awarded. We've got a notice to proceed date set for September 3 for the contractor. We did just hear recently from procurement that some of the bidding might be delayed, so it might be more of a early September bid date, which would push back our notice to proceed for a late November, early December to start the pump station. And then finally is our Route 1 Wayside Sewer Interceptor Project. Again, this one's about 90% complete, currently performing bores down there at the intersection of Coal Landing and Route 1, and then this is another one we anticipate to wrap up here in September. And that kind of concludes my presentation. Is there any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Alex? Nope, doesn't look like it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you finish with your comments? Okay. May I have a motion? We have a large consent agenda. Items 24, 21, and 15 were pulled. So, can I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda, last item 24, 21, and 15?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Cast your ballot, cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes six to zero. Ms. Bumpke, item number 15.
Yes. I would like to call the Holt family up, and I would like to recognize them now. So, if you could please come down to the center.
Come around this way.
Mr. Chairman, you still will, the board will still need to take action on the resolution in front of you. I think we're going to be presenting some letters, but just for a reminder.
Gotcha.
On behalf of the board, I welcome you to this Board of Supervisors meeting. For those of you that do not know, Christine and Margaret Ann Holt are the family members of Andrew Holt, a much-loved employee of Stafford County Government. And we also have us, with us here today is Ben, his brother, and Christine's mother, and Kayla, and who is his daughter. Andrew passed away unexpectedly on June 24, 2019, at the young age of 43, leaving behind his wife Christine, his daughter Kayla, and his son Gabe, as well as a host of family and friends. His loss caused us, here at the county, to discover a shortcoming in our insurance policy with families, a policy we have corrected that will prevent other families from dealing with unneeded stress. Christine, I'd like to read this letter of recognition to your family, and I also want to thank Margaret Ann, Andrew's mother, for calling me on the phone very shortly after he had passed away and bringing this to the county's attention. And from the bottom of our hearts, we all feel terrible that you had to go through this after the loss of your husband, your brother, and your son. Dear Mrs. Holt, on behalf of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, I again express our most sincere condolences to you and your family on the loss of your husband and our esteemed employee, Andrew W. Holt. It was indeed an honor to help remember your husband at the memorial service held at our Armed Services Memorial. This letter recognizes you and your extended family for the dignity and courage you showed in navigating the loss of insurance coverage after Andrew's passing, and how your experience brought about a policy change that will benefit all of Stafford County's employees. Resolution R-19-261 adds a provision to the employee benefits policy that reduces the first-month Consolidated Omnibus Budget Reconciliation Act, also known as COBRA, payment for the family of an employee who passes away in service. This will apply retroactively to your family. Again, we recognize your contribution to what will be a positive benefit on current and future employees in Stafford County. Our best wishes to you and your family. Sincerely, the Board of Supervisors.
Can you explain in more detail about the termination of the family health insurance? Is that going to be 30 days after the employee dies? What kind of a time period are we talking about for, for families who follow us?
Right, right. Mr. Foley?
It would be at a minimum 30 days, depending upon the date of the passing. So, it could be as much as two months, almost, yeah. Yes.
Ms. Bumpke, you want to make the motion?
And I would like to thank the Holt family and your other family and friends that came today to support you, and I also thank you for sitting during this long portion of our presentations and other things, business that we had to conduct before that. And with that, I would like to move for approval of R-19-261.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, please cast your vote. Tally the vote. Motion carries six to zero. Item number 21, Ms. Shelton.
Yes, I'm sorry. I was listening to the clapping. This is, this came into the CEDC for a discussion about the acceptance of 10.5 acres into our Parks and Recs program. We recommended that it come up to the board for discussion, and, Mr. Foley, who from staff is going to represent this item?
Mr. Harvey will.
Well, Mr. Harvey's coming up. I'll just, this particular item was proffered, 10 acres was proffered to us for the potential of putting into our Parks Department, and the information that we had from staff at that time was, and when I say staff, I'm including Parks and Recreation, is that it was, there was a large easement that's across it for utilities, and it, we didn't think that it would fit into our program. Is that still the case, sir?
Chairman Dudenheffer, Supervisor Shelton, that is one of the things that staff wanted the board to be aware of, that there are some physical constraints with the use of the property. I understand that it doesn't really fit into our current operational model and our, in our needs assessment for Parks and Recreation that area at this point in time. There was discussion at the committee level that, that it would be valuable for the board to obtain the property, to landbank it, for as we continue to develop out, there'll be less and less land available for recreational purposes, and it may become more viable use in sometime in the future.
Any other comments or anything, since it is the Rock Hill District?
Yeah, it's in Rock Hills District. So, couple of things, and I appreciate you pulling this item from the agenda, Ms. Shelton, because I was remiss in doing so. I want to be very clear and transparent that this property does abut my homeowners' association. I can see it from my house, and so I just went to, although this was proffered as either park property or conservation property, I don't feel that there's any conflict for me voting on this item. I do support the county taking it, not necessarily just for parkland, but one of the things that we see is, we saw in our transportation program, that we have difficulty frequently in getting land whenever we want to expand a road, widen a road, and Winding Creek is one of the most dangerous roads in the Rock Hill District. And so, while I appreciate staff's assessment from a park perspective, and don't necessarily disagree, I think it's in Stafford's best interest to retain title to the land because of the propensity of needing that particular piece of property in doing some road improvements along that stretch, which is identified in our whole transportation list.
Mr. Chairman, I have another comment.
Ms. Shelton?
At that CEDC meeting, I didn't remember that we, the board, made a recommendation to accept the parkland. Is that what we recommended? Because I don't remember that. I just remember us recommending that it go to the full board for discussion.
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Shelton, that's correct. That's my recollection, is the committee felt that it would be advisable to send this in front of the full board for a final vote.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And Jeff, what's the staff recommendation on this?
The staff recommendation is approval of the resolution to accept the property.
Mr. Cohen?
Jeff, and this is, and everybody, this is where my consternation is, is that I was on the planning commission when this proposal came forward, and there was a great deal of discussion about it ever being used for Parks and Rec, which is sort of what the resolution is, is to use it for parkland, so, because the traffic on that road is horrendous, but then there's no way for those people to get across safely. And so, I think that's where I have a consternation in taking it as parkland. If in the future, we're going to say, well, we're going to widen Winding Creek, then we're not using it for parkland. So, I, I had a great trepidation about this whole subdivision, and I think, I believe, I voted against it because of the amount of homes it was adding on to Winding Creek, which is, as you said, problematic. So, I, I'm really leery of just saying we're going to take it as parkland. I thought the only thing good about that whole deal was that it was going to go into a conservation easement and be left natural, which is sort of why people are moving to Stafford, is to see that natural space, and if, you know, so, I'm really leery, if this, if the resolution is just for parkland, that doesn't make sense to me. If it was parkland and maybe future something else, I might be able to go for it.
Ms. Mauer?
So, to your point, Mr. Cohen, and you make a very valid point as far as the resolution stating parkland, parkland, open space, if, within the background package, it does talk about open space. When we talked about this within CEDC, and Mr. Dudenheffer, quite frankly, was the most vocal about this, you know, land isn't going away, and so Stafford taking, even if we left it just as open space, which I wholeheartedly agree with, my big concern with, with leaving it with the homeowners' association, and, is that it's across the street, they don't have a vested interest into ensuring that if there was any maintenance required, and...
Excuse me, but I don't think that was an option.
Yes, it would go into a conservation easement managed by the homeowners' association.
But they couldn't do anything with it.
They couldn't do anything with it, but if there were anything wrong with the, the property, it would be the homeowners' association's responsibility. So, in addition to that, we would have to, we would have difficulty in obtaining from a transportation impact. So, that's why I had supported within the CEDC that Stafford County take title to the property, was it, it gave us, A, an opportunity to leave it as open space, which you can call it parkland, you can call it open space, I, I think it still meets the same, it's not going to be developed into homes. So, it still meets the same intent as outlined in the proffer, but it also gives us a little bit more flexibility from a county perspective.
Ms. Bumpke?
Yeah, I like the fact, I read it too, and I found it a little quirky. I'm like, is it parkland, is it not? But I like the fact that it gives us flexibility, and we're not growing any more land, so for that reason, I'm going to support it.
Anybody else? Cavalier?
I'm a little confused on the background report here, Jeff. Is, is this whole 10 acres parcel E that's referred to in the background report, is they, are they one and the same?
Yes, Supervisor Cavalier, they're the same property.
Okay, it's just different. Okay, then it says on down that, therefore, staff believes that in the current condition, parcel E would not meet the community's needs as outlined in the county's parks utilization study. So, but you're still recommending it?
That, that is correct.
And then up in, under recommendations, there were none in the, because a lot of times, we have a recommendation by staff, but I don't see that recommendation spelled out in this particular document.
Mr. Chairman, I think staff was in the position that we had brought some things to the committee, and the committee decided against what we had originally brought forward, so I think we kind of left it open because it was from the committee, just as an open issue for the full board to consider.
Ms. Shelton?
I have one final comment, and I'll go back to what I brought up at the committee meeting, is my concern was simply that we can, they had the opportunity, they, the HOA, can keep it as an open space. We want open space. If we, Stafford County, take control of that property, we gain the liability of that property. And so, right now, the HOA has the liability for that property. So, if any trees hap, you know, trees fall, keeping the land clear, keeping the grass mowed, that becomes our responsibility. And I know that there's not probably a lot, if any, tax revenue from that 10 acres that we receive, but I would imagine that whatever that would be, would be completely negated by having to maintain that property. So, that's why I would like to make a motion to not accept R-19-205.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a sec, a substitute motion to accept R-19.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to accept.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we never had a second on the main motion, it has to be...
All right, it fails before not having a second.
That's correct.
So, we're open for a, for a resolution.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept R-19-205.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the property as it's outlined in the, in the agenda. Is there any more discussion? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes six to zero. I'm sus-
Five to one.
Okay.
meeting. Is my concern was simply that we can, they had the opportunity, they, the HOA can keep it as an open space. We want open space. If we, Stafford County, take control of that property, we gain the liability of that property. And so, right now, the HOA has the liability for that property. So, if any trees hap, you know, trees fall, keeping the land clear, keeping the grass mowed, that becomes our responsibility. And I know that there's not probably a lot, if any, tax revenue from that ten acres that we receive, but I would imagine that whatever that would be, would be completely negated by having to maintain that property. So, that's why I would like to make a motion to not accept R-19-205.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a sec, a substitute motion to accept R-19.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to accept.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we never had a second on the main motion, it has to be second.
All right, it fails before not having a second.
That's correct.
So, we're open for a, for a resolution.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept R-19-205.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the property as it's outlined in the, in the agenda. Is there any more discussion? Okay, cast your vote. Tally the vote. The motion passes six to zero.
Five to one.
Okay, well, I, okay, total six, sorry. I was looking at the number on the new screen, but five to one. The next item that was pulled is number 24, from Ms. Mauer.
I, I just have a question on this, and I don't know who can answer that question for me. We are supporting them on a grant, but do we have any financial, should they get the grant? Are we doing matching funds? It wasn't outlined in the background package.
I can answer that for you. This is strictly a support for them to submit a grant application. Virginia Land Conservation Foundation and the other Campbell Foundation would provide the matching funds to them.
Okay, wonderful. That, that was, Ms. Shelton, since this is in your district.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Approve 19-264?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If there being none, please cast your vote. Motion passes six to zero. That concludes the items off of our consent agenda. We'll move to unfinished business. There are two items on unfinished business. These items were discussed by the board in this meeting on July the 2nd. Mr. Harvey? Discussion about healthy growth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is continuation of the discussion on healthy growth, specifically to get some guidance from the board on policy, excuse me, process issues. At the July 2nd meeting, we discussed policy issues. Some of the direction that the board gave us on the policy items were, consider expansion of the TDR program, should be considered concurrently with reduction dwelling unit density in rural areas.
Need the monitor?
Oh, excuse me, computer, please. In June, the board talked about how to proceed with its healthy growth platform and felt there are two important items. One was affecting the density in rural areas, so there would be less future residential development and more preservation of farmland in forest areas and rural lands. In concert, trying to direct growth into our targeted growth areas where, which our comprehensive plan recommends that half of our future growth occur in. So, the idea that came out of last meeting in July was that we'd run those two healthy growth initiatives in tandem as a unified program. We talked about the targeted growth areas where we would receive the transfer of development rights from the rural areas, and determined that all those targeted growth areas should be eligible for receiving TDRs. Also, that efforts should be made to keep the rural landowners whole by using TDR to offset any loss in residential development rates due to the reduction in rural residential density. An example may be in, in a situation where someone has an existing nine acre lot. Under today's standards, they could have one house and subdivide off two additional three acre lots. The concept would be that if the, the density changed to nine acre lots, that that individual would still have their house on their nine acres, but they could sell off two development rights. The process would be similar to what we see today under our TDR program, where it looks at in calculating what development rights you may attain by the total acreage of the tract of land that's eligible for TDR, and subtracting out certain environmental constraints that can affect the lot yield and development density. There also, the board felt that it was important to give property owners an alternative approach. If, for instance, they had already done prior soils work and had drain field certified, that they could maybe fully achieve additional development rights based on those additional studies. We also talked about TDR eligibility, be expanded to parcels less than 20 acres in size, in order to try to meet that goal of keeping landowners whole. We talked about the additional information being gathered by, from staff with regard to what other localities are using TDR, and how are they using them, and what incentives can come along with that. Staff is currently studying Frederick County, Virginia, as well as Arlington County, Virginia, which those two localities use transfer of development rights. We're also looking at Montgomery County, Maryland, which has a long history of use of TDR, and we'll be bringing that information back to you in a future work session. And also, the board said that the efforts should be made to keep the TDR program easy to understand and to use, which will help lead it to be successful. And, and as a follow-up, Mr. Foley talked about your, your six month schedule, and we tried to work in a number of work sessions into that six month schedule. At the July 2nd meeting, the board talked about the importance of having public input, and talked about the possibility of having a number of work sessions to receive that public input as we go along through the process of developing the program and sending it out for public hearing. So, the, this timeline looks at three potential work sessions, one in September 17th, another one in November 6th, and then we talked earlier about a potential December date. The November 17th work session would be, do an overview of the county's TDR program, also other TDR programs, and what incentives they possibly have, and get public comments on that, and then further help that, further help staff to refine our efforts towards the second work session, which would be looking at the eligible number of lots that can be sent in this, from the sending area, our TGAs as receiving areas, and how those densities will have to change and be modified, and also talk about how the densities would be reduced in the rural area in the future. Then, the idea behind the December meeting would be to take all those recommendations from the board and finalize it into a product that could be discussed with the community, and, and ultimate decisions made on the program for changing our zoning ordinance, zoning map, and comprehensive plan, and then in January, start the public hearing process. So, staff's requesting some additional guidance from the board on, with regard to our healthy growth initiative. Specifically, does the board feel that this timeline meets your expectations? At the work session, the board direction seemed to indicate that you wanted to include these work sessions, but not a special committee. Our staff discussion in July was that may be an option that the board might want to look at, getting existing landowners in the county involved in, who live in the rural areas, and also land developers to see if they, what their concerns are with the program, and get their input on how to make it more successful. In lieu of that, staff would seek guidance as to whether we should go out individually and talk to some of these property owners and developers to get their input, if we're not doing it through a committee process. And then finally, there was discussion at the board, and planning commission would have independent public hearings and follow the normal course of process, and staff would like verification of that as well. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, would you put back up that last, last slide? There are four items here. I think we could discuss each one individually and then give a consensus on the board or through motion. Is that what, acceptable?
Mr. Chair?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cohen?
Just one of my concerns is, and I was unable to attend the, the work session because of a health situation, in communicating with Mr. Snellings, I think it would be respectful if he had his chance to give input and to vote on anything. So, I, I'm a little leery of going and, and taking motions of voting when somebody whose district is impacted and has strong opinions is not in the room.
I, Mr. Snellings and I had a discussion about that. The, I mean, I could tell you what I think his opinion is, but will, would delaying this till the next meeting in Sep, first meeting in September affect our timeline in any way?
Ms. Chairman?
I mean, it's right before the 17th.
Right. I think the, we would move it to the 3rd, and I think we'd be fine. I think the only exception to that would be if, if you decide you do want to appoint a special committee, then we would then have to take the time to go through that process and bring it back to you at subsequent meetings. So, it certainly will push the timeline, because staff wouldn't be doing the work and bringing it forward. Instead, we'd have to form a committee, you'd have to make appointments, then we'd have to schedule meetings for the committee, and that certainly will take a few months to get, a couple of months probably to get that all worked through. Otherwise, I think we could, we could wait on the other items.
Ms. Mauer?
Yeah, and I mean, if, two weeks isn't going to make a difference on the committee decision, because if that's going to take several months, then it's going to upend the whole apple cart. So, so if, if we decide to forego the committee, and, and I, you know, I, I do believe Mr. Snellings was very active in this, as, as Ms. Pumpke has been very respectful of my involvement, Mr. Snellings has been too, and is very passionate on this topic as well. So, I'm, I'm okay with, with deferring it in the committee decision. I mean, that's going to upend the entire timeline anyway. Two weeks isn't going to make a huge deal as far as...
We'll, we'll prepare for the 17th work session. We'll, we'll prepare for the 17th work session anyways. That's staff work that'll have to be done for the committee, so we'll move forward, and then can schedule this for the 3rd.
Ms. Shelton?
I just wanted to make a general comment, Mr. Chairman. On the presentation, Mr. Harvey, you talked about, and we talked about keeping it whole. I just wanted to remind us that I think we wanted to do a little bit more than keep it whole. I would really, and the incentivization is an important part of this program, to incentivize people to use the TDR program, not just keep it whole. Because we do have people whose hearts are into conservation, but we also have people who are not. And I want us to be able to incentivize those individuals to use that program, not just keep them whole. So, is that, that different from anybody else's observation?
That's certainly not, I don't think, the opinion of all the board members, so it's your opinion.
Okay, I did not know that it was not the opinion of all of us.
Nope.
Good to know.
Okay.
And we will be bringing forth other incentives to consider.
Do we need a motion to defer, or we just carry it forward? Okay, Ms. Pumpke?
So, you know, I think Ms. Shelton raises an interesting point. While we may not all necessarily agree with that right now, I think it's worth looking at that if we're going to provide any extra bonus density. You know, I mean, we're trying to figure out what is healthy growth, and how do we move things to the TGAs, and that might be an important part of that whole conversation. So, for me, right now, I'm sitting back and saying, maybe there's something that I don't know. You know, I might have an opinion, but there might be things I don't even know about that might be impactful and might be a part of that decision. So, I, I'm willing to listen and learn more, and, because I want to make my decision based on data and why I should vote a certain way. What am I trying to accomplish in that vote? And so, I think that your comment might, is definitely something we should consider.
I'm not sure exactly what that, what you meant by that.
Did anybody else, you got it? Basically, I'm saying, I think that that needs to be weighed in on our entire conversation. I don't think we should just discredit that and say, no, no bonus density for...
That isn't what I said. And just to clarify, I mean, I just said that I, I have an opinion of what we should do. I'm only one person, but this board gave an indication that they wanted to go forward looking at both, the incentives and the, the possible downzoning or different changes, and that's the will of the board. That's where we need to go. I, I don't have an issue with that at all. I'm not advocating in any way that we turn off that. It's not, it's not my favorite thing to do. I'm just one member.
Right. No, I, I wasn't making that comment against you. I was just commenting on her comment.
I just, I, my only comment was, was that I don't think everybody agreed with what she said, and that's all.
Right, right.
So, all right, so we will pick this up at our first September meeting, if there's no objection, okay? Second item is Transportation Bond Referendum Communication Plan. Andrew.
Computer. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members. I'm Andrew Spence, I'm the Community Engagement Program Director, and I'll be going over the Transportation Bond Referendum Communication Plan with you right now. I'll go over the, I'll overview what we are doing today with it, the strategic direction that you've been providing thus through this process, the communication plan itself, and then also to provide you the communication activities schedule. The board's approval of the Transportation Bond Referendum that will be placed on the November 5th ballot, during that process, staff recommended that we provide a communication plan that assists with, one, the legal requirements, and the education and awareness of the referendum. It is important to go over the strategic direction that has gotten us here. In 2018, the board developed its first strategic plan, and in that, one of the priorities, the responsive transportation system priority that was crucial to developing this process thus far. Alongside of it, the board completed an objective, data-driven, comprehensive road study. In that, 10 projects, 10 major road projects were identified, along with 35 road widening projects, which has helped feed into the approved bond referendum. In 2019, the board, on July 2nd, voted to approve the bond referendum that will be placed on November 5th, and today, I'm here to discuss the communication plan. The goal of this communication plan is to educate and develop awareness for the Transportation Bond Referendum and those associated projects, and that staffer residents will receive consistent, accurate information, especially before voting on November 5th. The development of this plan, which is included in your board package, goes over several objectives, identifies very key audiences. Roles and responsibilities are important to point out. We will be working in partnership with the Department of Public Works through this process, as well as we will make sure the county attorney keeps us in line with those state code legal requirements. The key theme is road safety and widening improvements within 2019 Stafford Transportation Bond Referendum, and that is supported through several outbound and inbound communication channels. And then through this process, we will also evaluate and update you through that communication plan. For the communication activities schedule, we developed a three phased approach. The first phase is what we're doing right now. Upon approval, we'll be developing the messaging components that will go into those communication tools that we use to educate and bring awareness. And then for the road show, we will, for the second phase, will be mostly in September. Again, those types of partnerships with businesses, student groups, and community groups, along with the Department of Public Works, we will to schedule these meetings. We will even include what we like to call pop-ups, and some of those pop-ups will be at commuter lots to help distribute and communicate those types of information. That final phase three is a crucial phase, our final informational drive. We will then circulate a bond referendum pamphlet that will go out to all of the units in Stafford County that will provide specific aspects. In other words, what will be on the, the bond referendum. So, the ballot information will provide some frequently asked questions, some project descriptions, and an, an associated map. And then we will also try and facilitate several community meetings through that month, so that if the community would like to come in and ask and facilitate any kind of questions and comments about the bond referendum. So, at this time, we would just like to receive any additional guidance that you might have for the communication process, but the staff would like to move forward with the communication process. Any questions?
I have one question, Andrew, and Rashida, you may answer this too, but technically, we have no backup plan. I mean, there's, if, if this doesn't pass, we don't have another plan or an access to funding that I'm aware of. Is it legitimate to say that in the, in the advertisement?
I don't know if that's necessarily advisable for the advertisement. The 35 road widening and safety improvements does have substantial funding alongside of it in working with VDOT, and then looking in accessing several funds options throughout that process. The bond, by including them, provides us more flexibility through that process. As the eight major construction projects, staff will look forward to move forward with any alternative funding solutions for that process. So, I'm not necessarily sure we would be advisable to say that this is the only option, but at this time, this is definitely the best option.
Well, we can't say it's the best option.
We, we can't say it's the best option. We'll educate them and let them know that this is the plan moving forward, and help them understand the projects and the opportunity to utilize the 50 million and leverage those funds for these particular projects.
Are we going to state some way, someplace that the road widening and safety projects are going to be, likely going to be accomplished regardless of the outcome of the bond?
No, I don't agree with that.
We, we, right now, we're communicating what is on the bond referendum, and what information goes along with that, which is the... goes along with that, which is the project descriptions and then those...
But Mark was talking about backup plans, and we do have a backup plan for those projects.
And I think it would be important to communicate that after the referendum.
I don't, I don't agree that we have a backup plan for that.
I guess my question would be this, and maybe it's just because of my profession, but if the goal is to educate, and maybe you can educate me, is the goal of this, to educate one point of view and one mindset, or is it to educate total facts and figures? I mean, for example, if I'm doing Keynesian and supply-side economics, I explain how they work, and then I say what's, what's the benefits and detractions of each, and then the individual can make up their own determination. Is the purpose of our campaign to do that education, of which case, not Mr. Cavalier brought up, is valid. But if it's the other way, then it wouldn't be valid. So, that's, I'm just curious if that, what's the, the point? And then the other question, which is maybe the elephant in the room, or donkey, or bull moose in the room, is the paying back of, of it. Do we provide information as to that, or just say, this is what it costs, and payback is to be, to chairman? And I said, I don't know. I just am asking the people who do know.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Cohen, you're exactly correct on communicating the information. It has to be plain English, only on the facts and the information that is of the project descriptions, and educating and making aware of those projects within the ballot question. To your second point, I defer to specifically, I guess I didn't understand the second point.
I guess the second question is, is, I mean, if we borrow the money, there's, there's been ideas floated on how to pay it back. And so, do we mention those, or do we just not mention those type of things? That's, that to me is just a question of that. And then, I didn't realize this until one of the Fab meeting, but the errors, that will also have to be part of, the errors in the language has to be part of your communication as well.
Specifically, the errors you're referring to are the roads?
The roads that are, right. I mean, unless there's other errors that I don't know of.
No, no.
Okay, all right. You concerned me there, sir.
The, the Woodstock and the Hope Road, Road widening projects will be included no matter what through that process, as referred that they do have other funding opportunities. So, we will be sure to, and I can ask, Mr. Smith would like to comment more on that.
I might just, just step in real quick. I think what, what you all raising are important components of the communication. And how much of a potential impact is there on the tax rate is a legitimate question. There's probably a whole bunch of answers, you know? You could say, if we did it all at once, it would be this much. The reality is, it's going to be over 10 years. So, we really need to parse that in a way that is fair and balanced and so forth. And frankly, you all probably should be looking at these materials, and I haven't discussed this with, with Andrew, but I think this is important to get right. I think this question about, do we have a backup plan? I don't think there's any question that if the referendum doesn't pass, we don't have as much resources to do as many projects in as soon a period of time. There's, so there's a legitimate place there. If it doesn't pass, there's some impact. And how exactly we communicate that, I think, is work we really need to, to spend some time on. And so, perhaps what we should do is put some materials together and figure out a way, and maybe we could do it at a committee meeting to let you all at least take, take a look at that. Staff's going to have to do is balance the approach so that it's education and not advocacy. I think everybody on this board understands that. But I, I don't think it's simple. And we certainly want to get it to a place where this board feels comfortable with the information we're putting out and finding that right balance. So, we can answer more questions now and have more conversation, but I do think it, the reality is, we probably need to be bringing some things back to you all, so that you have a chance to review that. I hope we need to cut off conversation, Mr. Chairman.
So, so we will see a final draft before we publish anything, unlike the process for the bond referendum ballot question.
You actually did see the ballot question, but you got some information that was not fully correct. So, yes, we'll bring it back. You can look at it. We'll make sure that it's, it's reviewed very specifically, and we can get some feedback before it's finalized from the board.
Ms. Bomke?
So, everything that we're talking about right here is really, really important when it comes to the message going before the voters. I, I would like to also, and I think that we need to have a meeting and talk about it as a board. I, I agree with you. Because our, our community is very educated, and we need to make sure they continue to be educated on how the money's going to be used, and on what projects, and everything that you just talked about. But I think the other interesting, the other part that needs to be included here is the fact that our state transportation monies are continuing to go down. And they're going to go down even more with all these hybrid cars and, and everything else. And where's the state going to make up those transportation revenues when gas taxes continue to go down? So, that's another component that needs to be in there to educate them about that, that the state is, doesn't have any more resources for transportation. And, and, I mean, there was a big thing on Stafford Talk yesterday about our secondary roads, and people are complaining about the overflow on the weekends with all the beach traffic coming home, whether they're coming home from the river or Virginia Beach, and what it's doing to our secondary roads as soon as they hit the northbound river crossing, because it's just flooding our roads in, in South Stafford. And people are like, I can't even get out for the last five hours of a Sunday. So, but I think that all of this that we're talking about should be done at a meeting, a work session.
We'll add that to that lengthy calendar that we have. No, we, I think we can probably work that through some committee process as well, but we'll come back with a plan for you all to be able to review the communication message and materials.
Yeah, I'm not awfully keen about scheduling another meeting on top of the last discussion we had, but, you know, we certainly have our infrastructure committee meeting, and everyone can come down to that. That way, we don't have to schedule something new. That would just be my thoughts. I, I'm kind of meetinged out personally.
That's what I was referring to, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Shelton?
I had an additional comment to make. Ms. Bomke, you're absolutely right. We have a highly educated community, but they don't have the experience that we have. And that's why we sit on these transportation committees, and we understand the flow. We understand where, how long it's going to take the money. We know that if we make a decision today, it's going to take 10 years to see down the road. They don't. And so, my interest, Mr., I'm not, Mr., sorry, Andrew. My interest is, sorry, I'm losing my throat. I, my interest is really to make sure that when we are educating people, we're letting them see, and I think this is kind of what you're alluding to, is that we don't have a Plan B. And so, when you look at this, know, know that we don't want this to be your only option, because your option is always no, but recognize the consequences of that. And so, recognize the decision that you're making that's going to, it's, it's the opposite of an opportunity cost. If I don't do this, this is what I'm going to be waiting for. And to your point, we have lots of legislation and work that's being done in the General Assembly right now on how we're going to resolve our gas tax, because the revenues are decreasing. And so, how are we going to fund these things? So, we know these things because we go to all these different meetings, we're on all these committees. They don't. And so, our interest is to make sure that they understand that loss. If they choose differently, and it's okay, but if they do, this is what the timeline looks like, and this is what, you know, what are other things that we can do. That's the only thing I wanted to add to your communications forum.
Anything else? Are we clear, or do we have a, understand where we're going?
I think you, I think Andrew went over sort of the process, the steps, and sort of the, the big phases of this. And as long as you're comfortable with that, we're doing some preliminary work, then we'll do some very specific work. The key is, we need to come back and have some conversation about the message and the facts that we'll put out.
Certainly, a draft would facilitate that.
Yeah, I think we will do that.
And then we need to hone that message before we go out to the public and have public interaction. Otherwise, we're going to step on ourselves all over the place.
I think there's opportunity also for us to show you how we think that we can communicate to the public that even though Hope Road was mistakenly not included in what you adopted, which I take responsibility for, it is a part of what we're doing. It's a part of the whole package. If there's no bond monies, every project is less likely to get done. But we have to hone that message, as you said, Mr. Chairman. So, we'll schedule some of this for Infrastructure Committee at the next meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thanks, Andrew. Tough road here, buddy. Okay, we have two new items, two items of new business. The first one talks about proffer amendment applications, Mr. Harvey. Nope, not Mr. Harvey.
Mr. Zuraf is going to do this one for us.
Threw you to the wolves.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mike Zuraf, the Planning and Zoning Department. So, this issue would authorize the county administrator to initiate an application for a proffer amendment on eight properties that are located along Centerport Parkway. This is in the Hartwood District. The area covers approximately 300 acres. The property, it was rezoned back in 1989 to light industrial, urban commercial, and then a portion of it to urban residential. In 92, the proffers were amended. The area was divided into four sections, Sections A through D, and each part has a series of proffer conditions under separate ordinances. The residential portion of the project is not part of this request. The proffer conditions that exist include regulations for the protection of wetlands and floodplains, landscape requirements for development, road improvement requirements, including Centerport Parkway and Centerport Interchange, and the dedication of land to the, to the Stafford Regional Airport. Since the proffers were amended in 92, there are more stringent stormwater management and wetland floodplain protection ordinances, which have been adopted. The Centerport Parkway, of course, has been constructed, and also the Centerport Interchange on 95, and then land was dedicated to the airport. So, in 2015, the board did approve an amendment that removed all the proffer conditions for the properties that were within Section A of the Centerport Project. This was to facilitate commercial investment and job creation. At the time, the property owners were finding it difficult to close deals on properties because of the proffers, the proffers that were in place were viewed as cumbersome and confusing to potential purchasers. So, today, we still have the same proffers that exist in Sections B through D. Similar issues and concerns are being raised, as in happened in 2015. And so, the develop, for example, the developer of a modular unit, storage facility on parcel 3774J, they requested an amendment to proffer conditions on their parcel to reflect the improvements that have already occurred, and the changes to development regulations that are more stringent. Given the ongoing issues being raised, the district supervisor is requesting the proffers be removed for all the commercial and industrial zoned portions of the Centerport development. The proposed resolution would authorize the county to initiate the application for these properties. But I'll note that today's discussion is informational. This is the first time that the board is seeing this issue, and our plan would be, if the board desires to move forward with this, it would come to the next, your next meeting on the consent, as a consent agenda item for your adoption at that point. And then this, this action would move the application forward through the process. It would go to the planning commission for public hearing, and then back to the board. Also, we are in the process of obtaining authorization from property owners. Property owners would need to agree to amend proffers on their property. So, if any of the property owners wish not to amend their proffers, then they would not be part of the application. And this ends my presentation, presentation on the issue.
Ms. Mauer, this is confusing.
Yeah.
There's no maps, there's no, nothing to show us, so...
Yeah, and I, I have great consternation, number one, about moving something from new business in the Hartwood District with the Hartwood representative not here to consent. So, one of the things, when we talk about moving to consent, if somebody disagrees about moving it to consent, that we would move it to unfinished business. So, I am respectfully requesting that this go to unfinished business and not consent.
Is there any difficulty in doing that? Any repercussions of any kind? There's no time limit or timetable on any of this?
No.
No, sir. Coming back to the next meeting as unfinished instead of consent wouldn't affect the timeframe.
How's this, how's the agenda look for the next meeting? I mean, we're adding different things?
I, I can't answer that for you right now. No, we have added some things. I don't have the proposed agenda in front of me, so.
Okay.
I think it'll be manageable.
Anybody else have any comments? I agree that we should, we should move it. Do you need a motion to do that, to move it to unfinished business, or?
Isn't it just as if I was to come back?
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, the last, the last option here, or the last discussion point was something that I brought up, that I'm bringing up. A representative of the, the homeschooling community met with Dr. Kinsler recently, and he, Kisner, I'm sorry. Kisner, Kisner, I'm sorry. He was a relief pitcher for the, relief pitcher for the Nationals, I think it, but, what?
DM.
Yeah. And Dr., the, the school board. But he stated that in, a number that, that kind of floored me, is that they're aware of, in Stafford County, we have over 1,000 homeschool kids in Stafford County. I think it's probably after consideration substantially more than that. What the homeschool community does, as I've looked into it a little bit, they form co-ops. And the co-ops get together and bring together a number of these kids together so that they can jointly do different types of activities, from field trips to chess lessons to science, special science instructors and different things. I've heard of a bunch. They also get together and do things like put, to put on plays and stuff. So, but one of the problems that the one co-op group that I talked to had was, they wanted to put on a play, and they, they could never really nail down a venue for being able to do this. And as they went, what? Well, they, and so, when they, they, they used the Berea, the, the community room at Berea, it's not very big, but that's a place where they've used it. They, they've used library facilities, and, but they're bounced all over, you know, they're, they had all kind of problems. And the problem they had with going to our Parks and Recs, who had the facilities, was that they, they didn't have the money. It was just cost prohibitive. For these kids who are parents or taxpayers like everybody else, they couldn't use the facility. So, I, I think there's probably a lot of things I'm not thinking about in this as we go along. A lot of things need to be flushed out. I want to make it very clear, I'm not advocating taking money away from any of our public schools or anything, but I'd like to be able to investigate what options we may have for helping this group of kids. Maybe during the day, at some of our Parks and Recs facilities, when, you know, they're, they're underutilized or not utilized, and, and figure ways to do it. So, what I'd like to do is, is move this down to our Community and Economic Development Committee, and then I would recommend that they, in turn, after some discussion, turn it down to the Parks and Recs Commission, and let them meet with these various co-op groups and people who weren't in, and just find out. I know I've, I've discussed this briefly with, with Ms. McLendon about, you know, legalities and stuff like that. I think there are some, some issues and, and things like that. But I still think we have a, you know, over 1,000 kids who are underserved, and there are ways that we could help them get their education and the extracurriculars and things they need. So, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to go ahead and refer this down to Community and Economic Development. Any comments?
I have a question, Mr. Dunhefer. Why is it that the, the schools wouldn't support this? Because it's an educational activity?
From what I understand with the meeting, that the schools are, are concerned. Dr. Kisner was, was, expressed his concern. And I think there, there's some discussion about maybe creating like a lia- And I think there's some discussion about maybe creating like a liaison office with them and looking into what possibilities there would be. But that's school, school board stuff. This is a little, this is kind of under our venue. That's why I have brought it up here. So, Ms. Bomke?
So as we're thinking about homeschoolers, and I'm definitely in favor of that because they do pay taxes, but it just came to mind, is that something that we would take into account for also, like, private schools?
Again, I think that's an issue that needs to be explored. Most private schools already have the facilities.
Some.
You know, if they don't, then I think, who knows? I mean, what are availability? What's the cost to the county to keep some of these facilities open? You know, how would we do it? I'm not in any hurry in this. That's why I think it should be vetted through all the options and bring in as many experts and people. I'm not sure if there are other counties that are providing anything like this. I know in the legislature, it was very controversial with, they called it the Tim Tebow Bill, which had to do with high school sports. It passed the legislature several times, but was vetoed by the governor. I'm not advocating anything radical, crazy, okay? All I'm saying is that I think we have facilities that could be made available to these homeschool kids and their co-ops that would help them affordably be able to do some of the extracurriculars and things that other kids in the schools and stuff, which we pay for, are actually afforded right now. Any... Yes, Ms. Mauer?
So this is twice in the last couple of months that something that I've worked on more than a decade ago has come full circle. And when I worked on the census for Stafford County Public Schools, and every three years they have to count all the kids from between ages of five and, I think it's 19, and more than a decade ago, there was more than 5,000 kids that could have woken up and entered our Stafford County Public Schools, which is just a scary, scary thought. And from the perspective of facilities, not that they're coming and joining our school system. But way back then, the schools took a very hostile posture towards homeschoolers. It was interesting, the attitudes that I got from school staff regarding the homeschooling community. And they've come a long way. So I'm happy to report, they've come a long way in providing services to the homeschooling community. But Mr. Dudenheffer, you're absolutely right, that this homeschooling community saves us, Stafford County, a ton of money. If you think about every child that they're educating at home, we're not paying for their education. So anything that we can do to help, you know, provide them discounted services so they can continue, you know, doing this homeschooling. And it's not just, people don't homeschool just for religious purposes. There's a large military population, because they move every several years, that they have opted to homeschool in order to have continuity in education. So there's a large swath of reasons why people homeschool. And I really appreciate you bringing this forward, Mr. Dudenheffer, and I look forward to seeing what the Parks and Rec Commission comes back with and what CEDC comes back with as far as options. And Ms. McLendon, the legal options that we can provide for discounted services that we could provide these groups here in Stafford. And to your point, Ms. Bomke, on the private schools. There are a number of private schools. I sat on the Board for Blake Farm Day School, and we operated our classes. It was a hybrid of teacher instruction and online classes. And all of that was done within the, what is now the Howell Library down in South Stafford. But getting those rooms is becoming increasingly more competitive. So the private schools, not all of them have the big buildings and the big facilities. A lot of them are also kind of one step up from co-op. And so I'm looking forward to seeing what staff comes back with, and I want to thank you.
Any other comments? My last comment on it is just for full disclosure. The co-op that I experienced was I helped with my grandsons are homeschooled. So I don't want anybody to think I'm rushing off with anything here. But I got to experience the difficulty they had putting on the play Peter Pan. And they finally ended up having the play at the main library in Fredericksburg, but they couldn't have any of their rehearsals there because it wasn't available. And every time they went somewhere else, they had to tote all of their scenery and everything. The costume, I mean, the whole thing was amassed. But they couldn't afford the rents and the fees that we charge, so... Okay, no more comments? Okay, thank you very much. That concludes our afternoon open meeting. We're now going to go into closed session. Ms. Mauer, would you lead us into closed meeting, please?
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the Board desires to hold a closed meeting for one, discussion concerning a prospective business where no previous announcement has been made of the business's interest in locating its facilities in the county; two, discussion regarding the recruitment for the zoning administrator position; and three, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members pertaining to probable or actual litigation in the following matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the Board. This is in regards to Najadi versus Board of Supervisors and Jumping Branch Farm LLC versus Board of Supervisors, and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1A5 and A7, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 20th day of August 2019 that it be, and hereby does, authorize discussion of the above matter in closed meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Bomke. Cast your votes, please. Okay, motion passes six to zero. We're now in closed session.
May I read this entire resolution? A resolution to certify the actions of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors in a closed meeting on August 20, 2019. Whereas the Board has on this 20th day of August 2019 adjourned into a closed meeting in accordance with a formal vote of the Board and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas the Freedom of Information Act provides for certification that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with the law, now therefore be it resolved that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors does hereby certify on this 20th day of August 2019 that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act; and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Do we have a second? Cast your votes, please. Motion carries six to zero. We are now adjourned until our seven o'clock meeting. We have... Well, welcome all. We have a fairly full chamber if you count all the dogs, I'd say. Welcome to the August 21st meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors. We're going to open our meeting tonight with an invocation by Ms. Shelton.
Please stand and bow your heads. Thank you, Lord, for all the things that you do for us. Bless our minds and our hearts as we do the work that you need us to do. Bless our public service, including the animals that are here today and all of the trainers as they do your good work and do good things for our county. Thank you, Lord, for just being in our lives. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please remain standing. We'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Cavalier.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first presentation tonight, we're going to rearrange the schedule slightly. We're going to take the, there will be a proclamation as International Assistant Dog Week, and I'm going to invite everyone that wants to be on TV to please come forward. Okay, let's wrap around.
Just stand behind us.
You make sure... Well, this is a... We're surrounded by some pretty important people, mammals, dogs, whatever. But we're here to recognize the International Assistance Dog Week and recognize that. And we have here all these dogs, or service dogs. And we're also joined by the K-9 crew here for the Stafford County Sheriff's Office, who we will actually give this proclamation to once I get a chance to read it. And then we'll let anyone who wants to speak an opportunity to speak, okay? So be thinking about it if you want to talk, all right? And if any of the dogs want to talk, we'll let them talk too. Well, okay, let me hear one. There we go. Whereas assistant dogs transform the lives of their human partners with physical and mental disabilities. And whereas they serve as devoted companions, helpers, aides, best friends, and close family members. And whereas guide dogs assist people with vision loss, leading these individuals around physical obstacles and to destinations such as seating, crossing streets, entering and exiting doorways, elevators and stairways, et cetera. Whereas working dogs help law enforcement and public safety achieve their mission every day. Whereas service dogs assist people with disability, with walking, balance, dressing, furring from place to place, retrieving and carrying items, opening doors and drawers, pushing buttons, pulling wheelchairs, and aiding with household chores such as putting in and removing clothes from the washer and dryer. Amazing. Whereas hearing alert dogs alert people with a hearing loss to the presence of specific sounds such as a doorbell, telephones, crying baby, sirens, another person, buzzing timers or sensors, knocks at the door, as well as smoke, fire, and clock alarms. Whereas seizure alerts, where seizure, alert seizure response dogs alert or respond to medical conditions such as heart attack, stroke, diabetes, epilepsy, panic attack, anxiety attack, post-traumatic stress, and seizure. And whereas medical alert, medical response dogs alert or respond to oncoming medical condition... I read that already. Whereas International Assistance Dog Week, August 4th to 10th, 2019, provides an opportunity for us to raise awareness of the selfless way all types of assistant dogs assist individuals with mitigating their disability-related limitations. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this, the 20th day of August 2019, that it recognizes August 4th to the 10th, 2019, as International Assistance Dog Week in appreciation of the outstanding contribution of assistance dogs to the betterment of human lives, so... You should have brought your friend, your companion. We are definitely thankful for all of you guys coming here. And we're going to pass the microphone. Are we going to get any comments on TV here?
Thank you so much. These dogs are very important to us, the sheriffs as well as the community. They live at home with us and our families, and it's your dogs too. So the Stafford County Sheriffs, every day we use our dogs to keep you all safe, and they're your dogs too, so thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, is there anyone here?
So this is my service dog, Mufasa. And he helps me with picking up things that I drive, because I help with social interactions too, and it brings me a lot...
Thank you.
This dog here is my service dog, Mowgli. He's good at companionship and helping me to stop and just guiding me whenever I need assistance. Most of all, he's there when I need a best friend, and I am so grateful for his help and the love in my life. I love you, Mowgli, and thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, thank you very much for coming. And most people, you might not be able to see on TV, but these animals are just absolutely gorgeous. They're beautiful, they're well behaved, and they're helpful. So thank you very much for coming.
These puppies right here are being raised by college students at Mary Washington University. They've given up their time. The puppies are living in the school with them, attending classes with them. And it's an amazing opportunity, not only for the dogs to be trained, but it's wonderful that these students who already are having to deal with college are also taking the time out to raise these puppies.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your service. Thank you very much.
I'm Roger Gueze. I'm with First Responder K-9. This is a new program. We are training our service dogs along with general public and law enforcement or first responders to become service dogs of first responders who've been injured on a job, everything from post-traumatic stress to quadriplegics. These are four of 14 that we have in service. Eight of them actually are being trained by Fairfax County Police for preemptive stress rather than just post-traumatic stress.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Thank you. To the side, that would work. Bye-bye, guys. Take care. Thank you. Thank you. Gorgeous. They're beautiful.
All right, now for the second proclamation of the evening. And it's for the Quail Harbor Rescue Squad. So if you all could make your way forward. Ms. Shelton and I will be making a presentation. So before I read the proclamation, I do have some personal experience here with this squad. In addition to going to many of their annual installation banquets, which are always fun, by the way, and thanks for inviting me. But I actually got to deal with you right after you opened up one of your very first calls. But I didn't call you because you were so new at the time. I'd forgotten that you even existed. My children were small at the time, and my boys were playing on the kitchen countertop. And my wife had a pot of boiling water there. She was making Easter candy or something. And the boys, of course, got into it and ended up spilling some on themselves. And so they had some burns. And so I drove like a maniac out and through a Quail Harbor streets in my Volvo station wagon very fast. very fast. I could have got picked up by the sheriff that day. But I dropped them off at your station right there, because I said, "Well, why should I drive to the hospital?" And I remember someone chastising me when I went in. "Well, you should have called us beforehand." And so I learned a lesson there. The second time, you actually scraped me off the pavement on 95. So that was a few years ago, too. So, but I do want to say thank you for all your service that you have done for the community, especially the Quahia Harbor residents. I know really appreciate you, but your service call area is much expanded nowadays, and you make many, many runs. And now you have some career staff that works with you, and you have fire department personnel there also. So it's a full-up station, and everybody's very proud, and we want you to remain there. And so I've talked to the chief today about renovation of your building, so we're getting on that. The 30th anniversary of the Quahia Harbor Rescue Squad. Whereas Aquaharbor is a beautiful community located along the Potomac River in Stafford County, with more than 9,000 residents. And whereas the Quahia Harbor Rescue Squad is celebrating its 30th anniversary this year. Whereas charter members of the squad include John Chapman, Karen Chapman, Charlie Hughes, Patty Hughes, Diana McFarland, Candy Morrison, Howard Rose, Nancy Rose, Chris Schoon, and Joan, I always say that wrong, don't I? Chris Joan, she's the only remaining charter member. And Dick Wazakowski, the squad's first rescue chief. On July 21st, 1989, storing equipment at the home of the member, and managing to field a crew every night, with members each volunteering for 10 to 12 shifts a month in their personal vehicles. And whereas the squad dedicated a rescue squad building in May 1991, building out the interior themselves. Whereas in May of 2007, Engine 9, staffed by Stafford Fire and Rescue career personnel, joined the squad in providing coverage to Aquaharbor, the Aquaharbor Garrisonville corridor, and parts of Route 1 and I-95. And whereas today, the squad maintains an advanced life support ambulance, a basic life support ambulance, and a response vehicle, with a membership that includes emergency medical technician of basic and intermediate levels, paramedics, certified vehicle operators, and administrative members. Whereas the Quahia Harbor Rescue Squad, there are more than 1,300 hours a month, answering non-run-run calls, performing training, supporting schools, sporting events, and community events. And whereas the Rescue Squad is very active in the community with education programs such as cardiopulmonary resuscitation classes, SAVR, and BUCKER, as well as offering EMT classes on occasion, and assisting with scout programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Stafford County Board of Supervisors on this 20th day of August, 2019, recognize the Quahia Harbor Rescue Squad on its 30th anniversary, and for the many contributions of its members to the safety and good health of the citizens of Aquaharbor and Stafford County. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Cavalier. And on behalf of the members of the squad, I do want to say thank you. Thank you to our citizens for the support that you all have given us over these many years. I'm not going to cry. I'm not going to cry. I know, and in many ways, you know, I feel like, you know, the squad has been my baby. And I've been there, you know, but it's because of all of these members that we have, and the many that aren't here. Our rescue chief and a couple of our other officers, they're on a call right now, so at the hospital, so they couldn't make this event. But again, it's the support of the community that we get, and what we try to give back, you know, we, National Night Out is our big event now, because we didn't even mention our bike helmets that we gave out last, two weeks ago. It was over 480 we fitted. And, and we, you know, give a little bit of education to the kids on the bike safety when we do it. And it's something we look forward to, and I know a lot of the residents do too. But again, it's the people here that make the squad. It's the support that we get from our county chiefs that really, you know, help us to thrive and survive, that educate us, and hopefully, you know, help us educate the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now we'll have presentations by the public. Please remain courteous and respectful to members of the audience and to the board. If you spoke during the afternoon public presentation portion of the meeting, you are not permitted to speak during the evening session unless it is on a different subject or at a public hearing. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. Speak slowly and clearly into the microphone, and begin by stating your name and address. For the, for the high school kids, don't give us your address, okay? Please refer to the lights on the podium and monitor your time. Green indicates you start your remarks. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red notes that your time is up. If you're here to speak about this evening's public hearing, please hold those comments until the public hearing is open. I have three speaker cards, but then we'll give everyone an opportunity, once a speaker, a chance to come up. My first speaker card is from Karen Barnhart.
Good evening. My name is Karen Barnhart. And I live at 110 Aquah Bay Avenue, here in Stafford. I've lived there since 1983. This traffic that we're dealing with is horrendous. I live about two miles from Route 1. I went to get a haircut one day. I do that every once in a while. And it took me an hour to get those two miles. Because we have cut-through traffic that's coming through, they go across our Hope Road, Stafford Avenue, back that up from one end to the other. You get out to Route 1, and Bell's Hill Road people are blocking the intersection, so you can't turn south on Route 1. My landscaper sat there for seven lights, trying to turn left. The only way he got through was to block the box. It's in the plans that the split signals that we currently have are going to be replaced with concurrent signals. I would like for the board to take action to make that happen as soon as possible. I've been told that the problem with this is that you would have left-turn traffic that would interrupt the traffic flow. We lived for many years without those lights, and we had traffic turning left, with very little interruption to traffic. Now we virtually have no traffic flow. I'm asking for some relief. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker card I have is from David Souza.
Good evening, members of the board. I wish to speak on two issues, well, two things. The first one I would like to call to attention is the transportation impact fee that Stafford County uses. If I, if I stand correct, we can charge $6,000 per lot for developers, which is to have that money allocated to various transportation projects. However, again, correct me if I'm wrong, it was 3,000, a little over $3,000 per lot. I would like to advise the board to consider raising it back up to the $6,000 limit, so that we can get more money for various transportation projects. The other thing I would like to talk about is we have a bill in the works, and if the, we understand it's an election year, however, we've been talking to several candidates about introducing a bill that would allow the county to hire private contractors, instead of using VDOT to use, to clear roadside vegetation. If, I believe Mr. Cohen, I gave this bill to Mr. Cohen, however, if any other members of the board would like to look at this bill, I understand you have a legislative committee, I'd be more than happy to give that to you and discuss this with you further. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there somebody on our staff can talk to him about some things he said? Okay. All right. Last speaker card I have is from Rebecca Chung.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Chung, and I'm a Colonial Ford Senior. I will be giving you an update about changing Stafford's roads. This session, this recess that we've had, we've attended multiple events, including National Night Out, met with different delegates at all different levels of government, and have created new contacts with people that are willing to work with us for Helen Law. We are giving you this information because it is pertinent, because when Helen Law, and if it does pass, it will be useful to this county, especially because of the vegetation problem that we do have. We also have released a new survey that will give us a better scope, and a more broad scope, of what is going on in our county. We are willing to give this information to you and work with you guys and VDOT about what is coming up, especially we know with the Vond referendum coming up in November, and remembering that this information is important, because it does come directly from county members, county people. We are looking forward to meeting with you guys and affecting the settlement of government better. Thank you.
Thank you. It's all the speaker cards I have, so we'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone on the right who would like to come up and address the board? Okay. I'm sorry, my right.
Good evening. My name is Donna Cressup. I'm a resident at 2350 Courthouse Road. I'm here to speak tonight about the proposed tower, cellular tower, that is being considered for this evening. I'd like you to know that we are on the, on the very end of Courthouse Road, where there are minimal services, be it hard-line services, cable services, or internet and cell phone service. And my understanding is that with the extension, vertical extension of the tower, that there's a high probability of service in our area for many of the residents. So I'd like to speak on two points. One is the vote that I believe was scheduled for tonight, as to whether or not that grant would be authorized. And the, the second part is just general awareness of the lack of services to our neighborhood. We have community residents that are ranging from being there for over 75 years, to new bills, all expecting to have those kinds of services provided. And there always seems to be one thing or another that, that prevents it from coming to our extension of the road. So I appreciate your consideration.
And we don't normally respond, but this afternoon, the board voted to forward that grant application for, for consideration by the state.
Thank you for that clarification, and I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Okay, anyone on my left like to get up and speak? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Fitzgerald, and I reside at 4 Devonshire Lane, Stafford, Virginia. I am the mother of one of these young persons, and I won't say which one, because of them being a minor and the whole address thing. I'm also a public school teacher, but I would like to speak regarding my daughter and her friends. When Helen passed away, I happened to be with my daughter when she found out. And to watch how these young people have turned tragedy into promise, and I do all that I can to raise my children to be aware, to be kind, to be involved, and to be able to stand in front of you all, knowing that you have such power in your hands to make things better. And the only thing, I didn't even know I'd have an opportunity to speak. So in that, I think, okay, you reap what you sow. And so on behalf of these young people, I ask that you all would not just consider, but take action into sowing into something as simple as clearing the roads, so no other parent would have to get that call, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers would like to address the board? Okay, to bring them, we'll close that portion of our meeting. This evening, we have one public hearing regarding reclassification from an R1 suburban residential zoning district to R3 urban residential high-density zoning. And will be addressed by Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. May I have the computer, please? This is a rezoning application, case number RC 18152389, for a project known as Cherryview Landing. As the chairman said, it's a proposed zoning reclassification from R1 to R3. The proposal is to construct 71 townhouse units on 10.27 acres, located within the George-Washington Election District. The applicant will be represented tonight by Charlie Payne, who's their counsel. This map shows the location of the site, highlighted in red. It's in an area shown in the yellow color, which is suburban residential. You have nearby zoning to the east, which is R2 urban residential. This property immediately abuts the Rappahannock Landing Development, which is currently under construction. There are also some R1 zone properties to the north, along Musselman Road, and also to the west, along Krieger Lane. This is an aerial photo that shows the existing conditions on the property. There are two home sites on the, on the property, and existing stormwater pond, which may be a little bit difficult to see, excuse me, existing pond, farm pond, that was a little difficult to see on the photo. For the most part, the land is relatively level, and is conducive for development. This is the generalized development plan submitted with the application. It shows the proposed layout of the neighborhood with the 71 townhouse units. The streets within the project form a grid network, which meets the recommendations in our comprehensive plan for urban development areas. There'd be two points of access on Musselman Road in these two locations here, and then also two points of access along Krieger Lane. Musselman Road currently is a public street within the VDOT secondary street system, and Krieger Lane is a private road. Krieger Lane would be eventually upgraded to serve as emergency access for the Rappahannock Landing Development, and also proposed development further to the south of the property. This layout also shows that there would be a proposed totlot in Pocket Park at the center, excuse me, southern end of the property. The planning commission had a lot of discussion about this amenity and its location and timing. The original location of the amenity was next, located next door to the existing pond. Through negotiations with the developer, the proposed totlot in Pocket Park were relocated for safety considerations, and the applicant has also proffered that there be fencing provided around the pond. This pond will remain and be used as part of stormwater management for the project. The comprehensive plan recognizes this property to be within our South Stafford targeted growth area, and is recommended for residential development within that targeted growth area. Our targeted growth area recommendations in our comprehensive plan speak to urban-style development, with grid pattern of streets, pedestrian connectivity, and building good communities. This application meets a lot of those measures, in that it does, as I showed in GDP, show a grid network of streets. It's a compatible community to the nearby Rappahannock Landing neighborhood, and provides pedestrian connectivity within the neighborhood. When we look at rezonings, we look at impacts to our community facilities, typically schools, parks and recreation, public safety, transportation, general government, and libraries. Staff will note, when this application was initially filed, it was filed under legislation that took effect in 2016. That legislation limited the county's ability to accept certain proffers to offset public facilities impacts. The applicant has subsequently modified their application to take advantage of the recent legislation that went into effect of July 1st this year. So it gives the applicant additional ability to make proffers that they feel are reasonable, and that the board could find acceptable. The facility impacts specifically for schools, when we looked at this in conjunction with the school board, it was estimated that the 77 dwelling units would generate 39 total schoolchildren. 19 elementary schoolchildren, nine middle schoolchildren, and 11 high schoolchildren. There is a by-right development potential for the property due to its current R1 zoning. So when we looked at the end result, the proffers would be designed to mitigate the additional schoolchildren that could occur with the increase in the zoning density. So that equates to 24 students. So that equates to 24 students. It excludes 14, excuse me, 15 by-right students. And we have here the student generation that's proposed based on the calculations provided by the school staff. We also look at parks and recreation. We look at the parks utilization study that was done a few years ago, and currently find this area has adequate park capacity. For public safety, we note that there is a current level of service deficit, specifically at Station 12, which serves this property, at the Berea Station. Our county standard is that all calls should be answered within five minutes, or should say 90% of the calls should be answered within five minutes. The current response rate is 65%, so that shows that there is a need for mitigation of those types of impacts with these additional housing units. With regard to transportation, there are a couple of local improvement projects, which have recently been approved and built. We have, the built project is a recent widening of Musselman Road from Thomas Lane to Krieger Lane. That road has been widened to 20 feet. It was a substandard section. As part of the Rappahannock Landing development, the fire marshal required that that road be widened so it can allow for two 10-foot wide lanes for adequate passing of traffic. Also, the board may be aware or remember that there is a STAR study, which is a safety study that VDOT has done for this corridor. And specifically, they are going to relocate the traffic signal at the intersection of Short Street. I got the wrong spot there. Short Street, which is right here, and move it to Old Ford's Drive. There will also be sidewalks and other improvements along this corridor. So that will change some of the traffic flow from the way it currently exists today to, to more of the traffic wanting to gravitate towards the intersection with Old Ford's Drive and Route 17. So a lot of the traffic may in the future, from this project, instead of going out this way, will go down this way to Bellows Avenue and out Old Ford's Drive. The staff will note that the traffic analysis was, did not require a full impact study because of the limited number of trips per day. Our threshold is 1,000 vehicle trips per day, based on VDOT requirements. This project is estimated to generate about half that number of trips, with 30 trips in the morning peak hour and 39 in the afternoon peak hour. The applicant has done an additional traffic assessment and showed that there would be minimal impacts to the local intersections with this project. And as I noted, most of the traffic would, instead of going further down Musselman Road to Short Street, likely go on Bellows Avenue to Old Ford's Drive. With regard to general government and judicial services, staff understands that there will be an adequate level of service in the future when this project is anticipated to build out. There is a current, current deficit, because we have in our CIP a project to expand the courthouse, and it's anticipated that would be completed around year 2022 in the CIP. With regard to libraries, we note that there's adequate level of service currently. The comprehensive plan does project the need for a new library in 2023. And overall, looking at the levels of service, we have adequate levels of service for parks and recreation, libraries, and general government, but deficiencies in schools and public safety, and there are minimal traffic impacts with this project. The applicant is proffering architectural renderings consistent with our comprehensive plan's neighborhood design standards. As you can see from these elevations, that the houses will have varying setbacks to the front of the house, will have varying materials, and also will include pitched roofs and other features that make the houses look unique and more of an urban-style feel. The applicant has made a number of proposed proffers with the project, specifically proffering the generalized development plan, so what you see is what you get with their concept plan, limiting the number of homes to 71, the architectural design plans, which we just previously saw. And then a total monetary cash contribution of $16,722 per dwelling unit. That's their attempt to mitigate the off-site impacts of this development. There are also proffers with regard to covenants, establishing a homeowners association for maintenance of the private amenities. And also a proffer that was negotiated with the planning commission about the timing of the totlot and pocket park. The commission was concerned that, that that not be an amenity that waits to the end of the project, and there's a commitment by the developer to provide it by the 43rd occupancy permit. Also, as I mentioned about the fencing around the pond for safety reasons, and the removal of the existing structures will occur before issuance of the first building permit. Again, another safety concern that was discussed with the commission. And require construction of sidewalk along Musselman Road prior to the 47th occupancy permit to enhance the overall walkability of the area. For positives, staff notes is consistent with the comprehensive plan recommendations for the targeted growth area, also for consistency with our neighborhood design guidelines. There are proffered recreational amenities that have helped offset some of the onsite recreational needs. Mitigations of schools and public safety are considered to be reasonable based on their impacts and proposed densities consistent with adjacent development and the recommendations in the comprehensive plan. Our staff is recommending approval of the application with the proffered conditions. The planning commission, in its deliberation, recommended approval on a vote of five to two. I'll have to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions? Mr. Cohen?
Just a couple of quick ones for you. If memory serves me, while I was watching the planning commission, there was a discussion about the student generation numbers from the school system and their consistency. And so I think, if memory serves me, they have come to a conclusion now with the school system so that they're using one numbers, set of numbers rather than another. Does my memory serve me correctly, sir?
Supervisor Cohen, that's correct. The planning commission had a work session with county staff and school board staff to understand the school numbers. The schools have, in the past, used two different sets of numbers, a design capacity as well as a program capacity. Design capacity is basically how many students can you reasonably fit in, in a classroom, assuming that all classrooms are full within the school. Whereas a program capacity is looking at how the school classrooms are being used. So in a lot of cases, school, program capacity could be either more or less students per classroom, and it varies quite a bit. So in talking with the school staff, the conclusion was we would stick with design capacity for further analysis.
Which is what this board had said we liked as well, so.
Yes.
And then I just, this goes to something Mr. Dudenheffer brought up earlier today, about walking on the side of the road. I know Garrisonville Road is far more active than Musselman. But I'm one, I'm just a little curious, and I'll probably ask the applicant, about the sidewalk aspect waiting to the 47th home. Was that ever thought of, about how it would be for these people to walk up to all the amenities that are now along Musselman?
Supervisor Cohen, I will have to defer that to the applicant, because they will be able to speak more clearly on their timing of construction and the physical constraints of building that sidewalk.
Thank you, sir.
Any other? Ms. Baumke?
For the public's purpose, could you indicate why the two planning commissioners voted against this particular project, especially in light of the fact that your committee really, the planning and zoning department, really didn't have any negative aspects?
Supervisor Baumke, my recollection is that there were community concerns that two of the commissioners had, in particular about Bellows Avenue and the traffic that it's likely going to receive after the Short Street traffic signal was relocated to Old Ford's Drive. There was, Commissioner English in particular was concerned about the impacts of those existing neighbors in the Old Ford's neighborhood with, with more traffic going on their streets.
Okay. And then one other thing, and you don't have control over this right now, but when the Fred Bus stop is moved, well, is, when Short Street is no longer a right-in and, right-in and left-out, that it's just one way, correct? And everything's going to be moved down to Old Ford's Drive, and that's going to become the traffic light there. We need to make sure that that Fred Bus stop there is not so close to the road, and I know this is beyond your control, but if you could just make some notes about it, because people have indicated that when cars are coming down Route 17 and they make a right-hand turn there, that people that are standing and waiting for the Fred Bus are almost run over. Okay?
Excellent point. I'll pass that on to Public Works.
Thank you, I would appreciate that. And then also, I think you accidentally mentioned that, under the public safety, that the Berea Station is running at five minutes per, and I think you meant eight.
I think I meant to say 65% of capacity.
You did say 65, but you said in five minutes or less, not eight minutes or less.
I stand corrected, thank you.
Okay, you don't, you rarely make a mistake, but just for the record, I wanted to make sure it was eight minutes.
She caught you. Any other questions? Thanks, Jeff. Does the applicant wish to add anything? Or to stand up to the grilling of the board?
Always enjoy that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and other members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Charlie Payne, represent the applicant. Thank you for your time this evening. Hope you had a nice summer. I don't think I've seen you in a long time, so it's good to see you all. Now, thank you, Mr. Harvey, for your presentation, and I know that Mr. Harvey has covered most of this application, so I'll try to get through this briefly and not mess up this PowerPoint. Thank you. As Mr. Harvey had stated, this, this rezoning includes four parcels. They total over 10 acres. It is currently zoned R1, and they request a rezoning to R3 for 71 single-family attached townhomes. The R3 district does allow townhomes, and they allow them at seven units to the acre for density purposes, and also requires a minimum of 25% open space. The project is proposed at seven units to the acre. And as you'll see in this PowerPoint, we're actually preserving about 40% open space. And this project is encouraged under your comprehensive plan. In fact, it's encouraged under your Warrenton Road Planning Area Target Residential Growth Area. That is a mouthful. But basically, what that's saying is, your targeted growth area is that the county has planned for the higher density for development, residential and commercial, that fits under. And then with, under that particular TGA, the sub-area for residential, this project is encouraged for more dense residential development. The project is within the George Washington Voting District, Mr. Cohen's district. It's generally located south of Warrenton Road, east of I-95, and kind of backs up a little bit towards 95. West and north are currently some older, single-family detached homes. Rappahannock Landing is to our east, which this project is similar to in use. And the south is vacant lands in R1. Open spaces, I had noted, there's about 40% open space over four acres that are being preserved. It'll be used, as staff had noted, in particular for the pocket park, which was a big, big discussion at the planning commission level. And I'll get into a few more details about that. Cultural resources, there are no cultural resources or wetlands on the site. There is an old farm pond on the site that will utilize for stormwater management. There's no federal, state listed threatened endangered species on the site, and it's not eligible for the national register, even though it's near Falmouth. The project is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan, as noted by staff. It is within your targeted growth areas, or Warrenton Road Planning Area specifically. It is near transportation, major transportation facilities, being Warrenton Road, Route 17, and I-95. Obviously, they're also processed now, or planning now. VDOT is going to improve that interchange. Comp plan does recommend that 50% of your new growth occur in your TGAs. For this particular residential area, 800 townhomes are encouraged, total. The project density, again, is seven units to the acre, which is consistent with your comp plan. The project does also promote housing goals under your comp plan. It has a mix of townhouses, starting at about 200, I hope it gets 254,000. I don't know if that's the right out-of-the-box market rate, but it's about $250,000 for your base model, and you could upgrade that to 300-plus. And then the comp plan does include, obviously, you're in the urban services area to access public utilities. Here is the GDP. As staff noted, this is scaled, obviously, north and south, I'm sorry, here. To our north is Musselman, in this area here, Musselman Road, which has been improved. Krieger is to our west, as staff had noted, will have four access points. I don't think I've ever had a residential project, like, with 70 units where there's four access points, and that was something the planning commission emphasized as well. I'm sure the fire department was also very happy about that. And it does provide lots of flow through the project, and access to Musselman is going to be the key access eventual area. Krieger will be improved in the future, as staff had noted. This is the stormwater management area here. We initially had the amenities in this location because we thought they'd be closer to all the residents versus putting them to the back. Planning commission thought it'd be a better idea to move them to the back. Safety reasons being included is one of those reasons. So this is the pocket park and totlot area. It's over a quarter acre, it's a pretty nice, large site, it's fairly flat. And we are going to, by the 43rd unit, have this completed. And the plan is, because of your just normal construction planning, you'll have sort of the starter homes up here for purposes of marketing, obviously. And then what we're going to do is, we're going to move this way and build the homes back, and we'll build the sidewalks here as well, so folks can get back safely without having to be impacted by construction that's going on around them. And the reason why we're putting in the sidewalks, I think it's the 47th unit, whatever the unit is, is because we've got to relocate utilities, and just for, just construction activities alone. Put the sidewalk in too early, you're going to tear it up and pull it out and redo it. So that was, that was the rationale for the sidewalk timing. Here's the architectural renderings, elevations, which we have proffered for purposes of the project, and staff has noted, it's consistent with your neighborhood design plans. Transportation, access to the property, again, will be provided via Musselman and Krieger. Plan transportation improvements to I-95 near Warrenton Road, interchange relevant to the project. Six to eight general-purpose lanes will be added, although Mr. Dudenheffer told me today that might not be, might not be true. But we hope that VDOT fulfills its, its promise there. Improvement to Musselman Road and relocation of light from Warrenton and Short Street, as staff had noted, will require then a right-in, right-out only on Short, and will put a light, full light intersection at Old Ford's, which should improve traffic flow. This project does not impact a level of services, and it maintains a C or better with this development. Schools, staff had noted, school impacts. Currently, it's within the Rocky Run Elementary, Drew Middle, and Stafford High School districts. My understanding today, under the state code, even the one that's been revised, you look at capacity impacts as of the day of rezoning. My understanding is that with redistributing of the elementary schools, the Rocky Run Elementary is no longer tripped in regards to capacity impacts. Actually, there's adequate capacity. However, we had proffered for schools as provided in our initial application, and we opted in under the new legislation in, in order to keep, if you will, the proffer, which we believe is reasonable to address not only the capacity today, but capacity impacts tomorrow. We think it's reasonable to keep those proffers where we're proposing them. So that gives us the ability to do that.
Mr. Cohen?
So, so to use non-legalese, the old proffer way was lower. You're going with a way that actually gives us more money for schools.
So what I understand is, with the new updated numbers, we would not impact capacity at the elementary schools. But we before had, and those proffer dollars were put forward. And that number is 15,771 per unit for schools. As staff has noted, we're also impacting fire and safety, and that's, that comes to $950 per unit. And this proffer analysis that we do, we, we don't get to make up the data. The data comes from either the fire department, or the school system, or parks and recreation, or, you know, and transportation, we, we don't get to make those numbers up. So we work with what's provided to us by, by the county. So not only, obviously, do we have, are we proposing to pay proffers, but we also have to pay transportation impact fees. So this development will generate, at the end of the day, over 1.4 million. So this development will generate, at the end of the day, over 1.4 million in cash for purposes of the impacts of this project, which come out to a little more than 19,000 per unit. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Mr. Cohen?
All right. Just very quickly, number bedrooms. I didn't hear that from either gentleman. Are we talking two bedrooms, three bedrooms?
Three.
Three? Okay. Okay. I know you and I had talked, and you know this is one of my big bugaboos, is about the trees, the buffer between one parcel and another parcel.
Yes.
And I think it wasn't touched on, but you might want to go to the map and show people that.
If I can get the computer back up.
Because that's one of the things I harp on you a lot about. I know you're significant.
I just always wanted to say that. Can I have the computer back up?
You're not on Star Trek.
Let me see if I can get to that real quick. Wrong way. Yes. So all of the trees, oh, sorry, all the trees, I'm not doing it right, Jeff.
You're not in slideshow, that's why.
So all the trees and...
Put it in slideshow. Oh, man, I actually sound intelligent on a computer. Up on the, yep.
Can't do that from here.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. So all of the tree cover in here, and of course, through here, and I think we'll have a little bit back here. We'll all remain as-is.
Okay. All right. And another question, and I've raised...
I'm sorry. While I'm thinking about it?
Yes, sir.
We will not go through Rapahannock Landing, so there's no access to Rapahannock Landing as well.
And one of the things that I had sort of inquired about, and I think my planning commissioner and I went to another neighborhood, but they put in the covenant about not renting it out before a certain number of years, so that if their condos or townhouses, that they can't immediately just buy it and rent it. And so that is one of the things that I've asked to be looked into, to be in the proffer.
Yeah, and I don't remember that coming. Maybe it did come out in planning commission. I'm not sure. Maybe I answered it this way. We will market them to be owner-occupied for sale. We want to be careful not to trip the Fair Housing Act law requirements, that says you can't rent, you know, after you own it. This was also brought to my attention that we do sell a lot of these units in this price range to military families that live in the area, and a lot of times, they get transferred, so we don't want to put them in a box if they have to be transferred somewhere else that they can rent, because renting helps, it benefits them, obviously, help pay the mortgage on the property. But what we can do is that I think we can put in our covenants that the tenants would have to follow the requirements of the restrictive covenants that run with the land, meaning they have to upkeep the properties. They can't be parking more than whatever number of cars are allowed, et cetera, and that'd be in their lease. So there'll be, not only the property owner would be legally obligated, but also the tenant would be legally obligated. We can do that to ensure that the properties maintain their value, because it benefits the development for the properties to maintain their value.
Okay. If you could send me that language, and then I'll meet with Ms. McLendon to see how we could actually enforce that aspect of it. Thank you.
Ms. Shelton?
Could you talk to us about the walkability of this particular parcel with the other parcels up to the new red light?
The, we're putting sidewalks along the frontage here.
I can't see the computer.
I'm really, I don't know if, I can't have my eraser here, but we're putting sidewalks along here, along the front of the property. Now, the Rapahannock Landing has a network of sidewalks as well. Going further to the north, I'm not sure what the sidewalk network is today. Bill, do you know?
You've mentioned that you weren't going to have access into that other property?
Correct.
And I wasn't sure if you meant walkable access or definitely not driving access.
Well, we'll have not drivable access, but we'll have that tree line there as well, so we will not be coming through their development. I think, from what I've heard from those citizens, they don't want us to come through there, whether it's pedestrian or secular access. But Bill, I don't know if you have an answer to where the sidewalk network connects from here?
Good evening, members of the board. Bill Pyle with Bowman Consulting. I believe that, as Charlie was indicating, that we're proposing to construct sidewalk along Musselman, which will tie to Streamview Landing, and which is part of Rapahannock Landing, which has sidewalk that will extend all the way through Rapahannock Landing, all the way out to Route 17.
Okay.
Yeah, so Streamview would go east.
Okay. One more question about the Fred Bus. The Fred Bus being relocated, is there any opportunity for these individuals? And how far is it for them to walk to that bus stop?
Where does the Fred Bus stop now? Is it in Rap Landing? Or?
Do you know?
If it's on 17, they'd have to get to Old Forge to get to 17.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a fairly decent walk.
Okay. You know why I was asking, just because the comp plan requires or asks us to find alternative modes of transportation. So, thank you very much for answering my question.
Yeah, I think most of these, you know, unlike a multifamily development, which you have a tendency to find a need for alternative transportation, a lot of these folks will have their own cars. Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time.
I was just reminded that there has been some discussion with transurban about some specialty-type additions, considering its close proximity to the express lanes and stuff like that, but I wouldn't be counting on that. It may or may not happen, so. Excuse me. Thanks, Charlie and Jeff, for your comments. We'll now open the public hearing. Same as public comments section, each speaker is allowed three minutes, and your comments must be related relative to the subject of the public hearing. Speak slowly, clearly, enter the microphone, being by stating your name and address. Please refer to the light on the podium to monitor the time on your presentation. Green indicates the start of your remarks. Yellow indicates that you have one minute to summarize your comments, and red notes that your time is up. We have one speaker card, and that tonight is from Ms. Ruth Carloni.
Ruth Carloni, 300 Mount Oliver Road, and I want a dog now. They are so cute. Ours passed away. Okay, real quick. There really isn't any compelling reason to approve this reclassification, but I'm sure that you're going to go ahead anyway. You really, number one, should be looking at the TGA as a whole with that area. You should get your programmers and start drawing a map of proposed commercial, bus stops, whatever else that you need, because right now, I really think you should be doing that. Okay. Amenities is a joke. The proffers of amenities, a tot lot and a picnic table and little park, little land, that's it. You've got 71 units at approximately two to three persons per unit. You've got quite a few people there. Why in the holy heck should they wait for the, I just, this makes me so angry, because it keeps showing up in different requests. The issuants, they don't get to use what they're paying for in their price. They don't get to use that tot lot until after the 43rd occupancy permit? So there has to be 43 people then, I mean, occupancies, before they can start using, and there are, some of them are already in place using the facilities there. There should be, and I just, the coldness of some of these developers, they should be offering a coverage shelter there for them to meet and have fun and have picnics. All they've got is a tot lot and some benches out in the open. Now, if you think that's caring for what they're going to make off of this complex when they sell them. Also, another thing, I'm very concerned about the traffic. We still have that Rapahannock Landing, oh, almost out of time, Rapahannock Landing that hasn't been built yet, and there's a heck of a lot of traffic right now, but I really think you need to look a little closer at the combined traffic. And that's, I had a lot more to say, but I'm out of time. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chamber who'd like to address this public hearing? Okay, there being none, we're going to close the public hearing at this time. We'll come back to Mr. Cohen.
Well, I guess, does the applicant want to respond first? I always got yelled at at planning when I forgot that part.
Nope. That's, Mr. Payne never passes up an opportunity to speak.
I'll be quick, I promise. And maybe I wasn't very clear. I appreciate comments from the public, as always. Their input helps shape projects, very good projects, so I always appreciate it. And I wasn't real clear about the amenities, especially the pocket park. We're finding that these pocket parks are very popular with people, because they like to be able to gravitate to one location in the development. And so there will be picnic tables, and there'll be stand grills, and there's going to be an open field area for the kids to play and a tot lot, and it's a pretty nice size recreational amenity. So we are seeing this as something that's actually very attractive to property, to new homeowners. We also want to make it nice, because if we don't, we're not going to attract a lot of people to buy our units. So it's to our incentive to, you know, encourage it be a nice layout. Now, again, the reason why we're doing it at the 43rd unit is because of the fact of public safety during the construction process. We don't want people in the middle of an active construction site. That's why we're building that spine part of the development, if you will, so that people can get access to the sidewalk and get back. So I just thought I'd clarify that.
Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Yes, just quickly, and, well, you don't have to come back, but the two things that Charlie, if you could get back to me on, is the covenant issue, so that I can talk to Ms. McLendon, and then can you flesh out more the pocket park aspect? I do remember from my time on the planning commission, it was almost, it's unheard of that they would put the park, any type of amenities, that far down. I remember them having more consternation in pushing for them elsewhere, so I thought it was interesting that they were pushing for that for safety's sake. So I'm going to make a motion to defer this until the first meeting in September, so that you can provide that information, and we can get some more information on that aspect of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to defer this to our next meeting with some questions being answered from Mr. Cohen. Is there any discussion on the deferral? There being none, please cast your vote. The motion passes six to zero. That concludes our business for the evening. Our meeting is adjourned.